Okay, good morning. We call up each county commission meeting to order and start with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Good morning, everyone. Who's the new guy?
Uh, Ryan Prince, I'm Josh's law partner.
Nice to meet you. I don't think we've met.
Yep, I've been here a few times, but usually Josh covers, so I'm filling in for him today.
Very good. Alright. We'll call all three commissioners present. Cheryl Moore, Sauce and present. Addition's allegiance to the agenda. Uh, we'll have to remove Matt Booker. And then Josh is asking if we can have a ten-minute executive session to turn the client. Josh will be available at ten AM.
Was that before ten AM?
Yeah, I think he has a hearing at ten.
Yeah. So we will do that early, probably do that.
I need to add that receding item.
Yes, again, which one?
The item, that receding discussion that will be, it'll have Laura and Linda and Scott. So probably somewhere. I asked, I talked to Scott yesterday and asked if he wanted to come at ten thirty and put it before his eleven AM or if he thought there would, because he asked if he could do it during the same time and I said if he thought that was plenty of time, but he responded, said he'd try to get here at ten thirty. I need to have a favorable change.
See the discussion. But ten thirty, twenty forty. And then Laura, you need to compare.
A favorable change.
Can do that right after. Right. Okay, anything else? Anything? Thank you guys for keeping the additions live. I really appreciate that and the questions as well. So thank you. I will move to approve the agenda of the additions and allegiance.
Second.
Those are the main seconded all in favor. Motion carries. Uh, just a brief minute here. We have a new sound system. As you guys can see, we have some microphones in front of everybody. So if you're listening now here to TV land, feel free to let us know how it's sound with the splitter. Michelle has control at her desk now, so if we need mute mics or recesses and things like that, we have that capability there. We'll go ahead and move forward. Public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Robert? We'll move from public comment.
Um, let's go ahead and go to, let's touch base with Josh here. Well, wait, I'll need you to come back. Actually, you can go to the green person.
I just need to change an employee from clerk one to clerk three.
Is that rate, I don't know how we determine the rates on it. When we're increasing rates.
I believe you have, take the little change.
Everybody else?
Well, it's a little bit different. Everybody's, I haven't found any exact, uh, scale or anything on any property.
Yeah, I think you have one.
It's okay. I did ask the clerk's office. But regardless, I did what I wanted.
This is a two or a three?
Three.
I think that is correct, pen number. This is the, there's the new ones. That is a three that's been here for a while, so.
And she's.
Yeah. Okay, correct.
Well, that makes sense. I will move to approve the personnel for the election.
Second.
Are we not saying what it, who it is and what it's like a rating?
That's what I'm doing. To protect when people, uh, employee, if people want to understand, they want to know this, they can get the clerk's office. Put in a request for information request so they can get it that way. I stopped it a long time ago.
You don't think it's, I mean.
Yeah, we just did it a few weeks ago, actually, the same situation. But motions been made and seconded.
Can I?
Sure.
I don't know that we discussed that as a commission, that that was the process we wanted to move to because I don't know anything about that.
The non-elected personnel? Is this not involving non-elected personnel? I mean, that's something you can handle in executive session if you want to do that, and that's one of the exceptions. It's not elected personnel.
Yeah, well, I'm talking more about the process. I mean, we've always, you know, anything that comes through here that's dealing with costs and spending, we always state, you know, what it is. So in this case, we would state the person and their, the position change and then what their rate was, and just being transparent with the public, but I don't know. He said that he stopped doing that, but we as a commission haven't had that discussion.
I believe we did have.
I know it's been done this.
At the beginning of the year, explaining then why not to hide anything from the public because they can get this information in the other clerk's office. It was simply just not announcing people's names and pay rates over out loud in front of everybody just to protect people, give them some sort of, uh, which we don't have anyway, but, uh, some sort of identity, if you will, is why I started doing that.
Well, I mean, if you said that you told me, that's one thing, but that's not a discussion where we as three people give our perspective, and I don't, I've never been asked my thought on that.
Well, I'm not going to dispute that with you. Uh, I'm pretty positive that we did have this discussion right here in open meeting and Commissioner Bailey remembers the discussion as well. Uh, the alcohol name demotion made it and it's been seconded. So if you would like to make much in the future on these payroll action forms and include different things, yeah.
I guess I have just like clarification on the process if we are going to be transparent about when we're spending money. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know why doing this the way that it has been done to where you're transparent with the public, why it's a bad thing.
I think this is a bad thing. A bad thing. I don't think the public can get this information by the clerk's office requesting information.
Well, so if you read.
Just like everything else that's entered into as subject record. So I just chose to not throw their names out and all that while we're doing these.
But that's information that if it's, if it's in here and then, you know, the paper used to report on that, people can see that and it's transparent. If it just says payroll action change, nobody knows what it is, who it is, what it's for. So they're going to go to the clerk's office and say, could you tell me what this?
Just like you do with any other request for information, just like anything. The same thing, that's the executive clerk's office.
Well, I would just make a public statement that I think that we need to be honest and transparent with the public, and I don't know why not listing those changes is not something that we're doing. I think it's trying to keep information from the public.
Good for you. Alright. Motion's been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. That's awesome. Can you get this part of that to the clerk? Thanks, Laura. Okay, in number two.
Yeah.
Josh can have a spot again.
I might step out and call him real quick, just to.
Yeah, just to see.
Wes.
Yes.
Can you make that government twenty first?
What's that?
This change, the twenty first of this month.
For payroll purposes?
Yes.
Is that?
And this is, I was thinking back to February twenty first, because that's when I had to do the clerk increase in order to give her access to, um, the motor vehicles that she needed because she has to go up to the, um, title moving in order to do that. And the state said that in order to give her the access to the records that she needs, she had to go up to clerk three on that. So I was, took it back according to the papers to February twenty first, so she would be getting paid for time of doing it this past. I had intentions of coming in here sooner, but I've been having to work at my desk a lot, and so I have not been able to.
Well, we're three days from the new pay period, and I understand you wanted to backdate it, but I just wish we'd have known that a lot sooner. I wouldn't.
Well, that's what she mentioned was, uh, do it at the twenty first, which would have put her from not getting paid for three days when she's been doing it for almost a month, but.
Well, she's still going to get paid for three days. She's just not going to get paid the new rate for those three days. She's already been this far through the payroll at that same rate. I just have a tough time rolling that far back. I don't know. What do you, what do you guys think?
She's been doing the work the entire time.
I, I would prefer that these come to us, um,
Sooner.
Sooner, but this isn't uncommon. I mean, we've approved stuff to be retroactive multiple times. So I don't know why this one is different than, if we want to, if we want to start a precedent.
I'm just asking what you think.
Well, I said two things. I would like for people to bring them in a timely manner to where we can approve them in advance of the date they would like to start. We have approved many times retroactive, so.
I don't, I'm not saying we have or haven't. I'm just asking you the question. Jay, how do you feel about this?
I'm good with making it retroactive for, I know who this is and I know she's been doing work, so I have no problem with that, but I'm with, I think we do need to get it in where is make a policy that if you bring it late, then you're only going to be able to go to the next payroll unless you have it within a week's period of time or something.
I even signed it on February twenty seventh. It's just due to having to work the front and everything.
But if you can't make it, give it to the clerk and just have her have a meeting, so either way, we'll get it handled for future references.
Yeah, for the record, I don't have any issue with this too. I guess since we're all making statements, we have done this in the past, and I was perfectly happy to amend, but motion to backdate that to the previous payroll, February twentieth.
And I'll second that motion also.
Motion's been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
February twenty first?
Yes, the previous payroll.
Because if it's twenty, it's included in.
Twenty first, that's what I said, previous payroll. Uh, motion's been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he's driving. He has it on focus, so it doesn't like go through, it goes straight to voicemail. He'll call us soon as, uh.
Well, Ryan, what do you got, Laura? You may get interrupted. Head to, huh? I said you may get interrupted, but you can come on up.
Okay. I'd like to put up here on the meeting that the state is meeting at Melvin High School tomorrow evening for the road project on seventy five highway. So just want to code it out.
What time is that?
Uh, the officials meeting, um, commissioners, trustees of townships is four PM to five PM. The community open house for the public is five to seven PM. And they're going to be having the state engineer and another person for the public affairs manager at this meeting to answer questions, um, go over detour routes. And there's just, there's a lot of questions that I'd like to ask.
So this is the, these are the bridges on seventy five going south.
Seventy five highway going down to Coffee Town. I think the last one, the last stage is probably the Maracena Bridge right there at Melvin Lake. I think that's going to be the last on the list, but we'll find out more tomorrow evening in that meeting. Uh, we didn't have the same notification when the thirty one highway project came up, and I think this might be kind of some stuff that might have came from that, not having much notification until we've seen the message board go up.
Was this sent to landowners? Not how they sent it out? They just didn't know or?
Had you guys?
No, we don't.
Well, you guys are on the side.
Right, we're on the side, so we've been here.
I haven't talked to a lot of people down in the Melvin area to see if they got it. I know it was sent to our office here. Uh, I don't think I received one at my.
Can we have somebody contact the trustees of those townships that way so they'll know that it's going to be tomorrow? Because they're the ones that get the first batch of phone calls.
Yep, yeah. And my concern is really, um, when they do do the Maracena one, where are they going to route the traffic? Are they going to route it to our old seventy five onto a road? Because that's, that road's not really built to handle that kind of traffic. What are the routes that are detour planned?
There is no route around it, is there?
Not really.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, so are they going to ship them down to Melvin?
Well, when I read the thing that they sent out, I don't think they're closing it all the way down. I think they're closing them to one lane.
That's.
So I think when you get there, you'll find, I think that's, the information I got, I think, I think it said they're going to close them down to one lane. And there's three bridges, if I recall reading it right.
Frog Creek, and I do believe, uh, one of the overpasses that probably go.
And they'll slow it down to fifty five mile an hour and they'll go one lane on each of those bridges.
Ideally, that'd be the best.
I think that is their intention.
Have extra traffic shuttled to our road.
From what I remember seeing, that's from what I remember reading, that's what I think I read. So I'll, I'm planning on trying to make it there tomorrow night, so.
Um, another thing that I brought in to me is, uh, we continue to still have issues with our fuel islands, our unleaded pumps. If it's cold in the morning, hot in the afternoon, they will go into a vapor lock. Fuel pulls away from the pump. Nobody can get it unleaded.
And that's where all the fuel comes for all the county vehicles and service cars.
For all the fuel for the county vehicles. Some of the options that we've looked into is, um, they've painted the piping white so it doesn't draw that reflective, bring in that heat and stuff. So that's been done before. Another option that we've looked at is I've reached out to another company that does that, and that was when I was pretty new here. And they never did get that, you know, put in a force system for me, and they never did give me a quarter for that. Um, another option we thought about doing is a canopy over to shield it, to keep it shaded, to kind of block some of that sun rays out. So I reached out to this, um, local building up here. And, uh, they, they supplied me a price of what it cost to put a roof over that. Um, it does not include taking down the chain link fence that would be extra for the permits that would be needed through the city, which we can cover that. Um, that's not going to be a big deal. And it was came in a lot lower than what I thought it was going to. So I brought that in. I figured when we were looking at it and going over everything, I was figuring in the twenty five thousand range. It came in under that. But I have.
It surprised me how high it is. I didn't think, I mean, we're talking a canopy. How big is the canopy?
Well, it's a canopy with the, in the road and everything. Um, it's going to be ten foot above that. So it's going to be ten foot on top of that wall that's built over the top of that. You have to allow yourself a little bit of extra room to get to the top of those tanks because they do have access points on top. Like I say, I haven't seen a lot of prices on other buildings and stuff. How that would cost. But the size of the local. That price, I would definitely solicit some of the bids, just to see where I, I mean, I don't think it's crazy, but because you can't just put just anything out there. When it's going to affect it, you're going to get something permanent. And it's engineer trust is what, so they're going all out. I didn't notice any footings or anything around it. Is there already, is that already sitting on concrete? Yeah, they'd be attaching this to that concrete.
To the, is those blocks or is that a concrete wall?
It's a concrete wall. Yeah.
Is that where, when they have a spillage, it goes into that? Okay, I was thinking.
Containment system. Yeah.
How often does this thing vapor lock up?
It usually affects, uh, it's usually about a month, month or so that we deal with it. Then once it turns hot, everything's the same temperature usually.
So it's in this one month?
It's that rusty.
What about going into the winter? Does it do it again then?
What's that?
Does it do it again in the winter when it goes from being hot to being cold?
Usually, um, yeah, in the fall, you kind of get that a little bit and stuff. Usually when it's cooler, it'll, it'll pump fine. It's when you get that.
And we get a pretty substantial discount by buying if you don't have it here. Is that correct or not?
Oh, yes, yes. Compared to what if we had to go out and buy this, but I think right now, um, what we pay for unleaded, which is the mid-grade is what I buy. Because it runs better than patrol cars and stuff. I think my price is two fifty-two a gallon for mid-grade unleaded.
So it's sixty cents less.
Yeah, so it's three something for the mid-grade. Right. So it is a considerable savings when they have to go to, when we have to go to, um, the different gas stations around.
Wouldn't take long to pay for that at that rate.
No, it would not. Um, another thing is it kind of gives us an option too, because like when we got into the cold, cold temperatures, actually having a rough over it when we got, uh, the pumps were freezing up. That was mostly due to moisture condensation from the heating and cooling Right. of the tanks. So
So is that high?
The moisture that was freezing in our lines and shut down our diesel.
Is that high enough to get the trucks underneath and graders and all that underneath to get fuel in them?
This would only be over the tanks. It's not a.
Oh, not the pumps?
Yep, not the pumps, just over the tanks.
And are the tanks already painted white, I'm assuming then?
No, they are already.
Oh, so they haven't been painted white yet, okay.
Just all the piping has them. It's just that the piping is where it was losing that. Is there any ventilation around that containment unit? Yes. Is there, so the air can move through there? And we face the same thing in Franklin County with our pumps. They would do the same thing. They were exposed horizontal tanks, just like what they're running here.
What'd you do? Did you paint them or did you build something over them?
Um, they ended up going with a fully forced system. Actually had somebody hit the fuel pumps about enough where it dug up and dug up and turned too short with the tractor.
And I've got Josh here whenever you're ready.
So that is what I have. So I will reach out to, uh, if you know, the contractor, someone who does that sort of thing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I assumed.
Yeah, there's a seven point three. Yeah.
And then what I'll do is I'll just take off the prices where they don't do that and just, that whatever thinks exactly the same.
Yeah.
So they don't, so they don't get something special.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No?
You got?
I think we got.
Uh, they're building a very large bridge port today up on one hundred twenty fifth east of Fair Lawn. That starts at ten this morning. Bridge one thirty nine that's on two twenty nine that goes over into Franklin County. They start the dirt work tomorrow morning on that bridge. So then, once they start the dirt work, guardrail, reseating, that bridge is going to be open. So then the next one will be that one up there. Um, the prop, the bulk of the crew that's working on one hundred twenty fifth, as soon as that one's poured and ready and curing out, they're going to slide over the bridge off one hundred fifty seventh street. And so all that crew's going to slide over there. They're already doing the wing walls and everything, so that will be the next port. Um, the twenty fifth, we start, um, pre-con meeting for the bridge behind the moment they unload the state. So, and then that's slated to start, um, before April two. So that would be pretty far.
Cool.
That's King Construction.
Alright. Nice. Alright, very good.
Have a good day.
Yep. Okay, I will move to enter to executive session and then carry five privilege with all three commissioners. Assume, Brian, you're going to.
Yeah, yeah, and I can do a litigation update at the same time, just in there.
And Josh and I will be in front for ten minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries.
Right.
Executive second. I believe that's the one we're speaking for today, correct?
Next one?
Yes. Okay, chill. All of your phone stuff.
Sixty of them.
Did you all have time to review the go pay register?
I scanned over it, but I gotta go through it and then if I have any invoices to look at.
Uh?
I did scan over it on my phone, but when I looked through it, I had invoices to look at. Plus, I think it's good to have discussion about deals also. The three of us.
The whole point of sending that out is to try and make these meetings go as efficiently as possible. So just bear that in mind. That's why we sent it out earlier. I will move to approve the Webroot antivirus renewal in the amount of $1,019.40 to be paid from the computer fund in the clerk's office. Just CDW, sir.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That was, but I think it said sixty on there, right? So it's for multiple computers?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not just the clerk's office, so.
Just talking about the funds. Are you guys going to say it correctly or is that what we're gonna do today?
Well, I thought you said it was a computer fund.
I made the motion. If you'd like to make the motion, you can. And I'm sure it's accepted. It's okay. You voted on it, we're passed that.
Well, you make the motion and then it's accepted, but then there's usually time for discussion before you vote. I just, I misunderstood something you said. It's a computer fund, but it's not just the clerk's office, right? It's for all the computers.
Yes, sixty of them. I'm not venturing past that. That's going to be sixty. We just want sixty of them.
Then I misunderstood what you said about the clerk's office. What was the, I didn't, so what was the motion?
The motion's been made in second. It's been passed, so we're not gonna go backwards and do this over.
I didn't understand what you said.
I made the motion to pay this bill from the computer fund in the clerk's office. Does it come from the clerk's office? She's the one who brought it forward. Is there something we need to fix?
My question was, this isn't, with this many, this is for all the computers here, not just the clerk's office?
Yes, the one was sued, yes.
He said from the clerk's office. He's not the one that brought it.
Okay. Yeah, I thought, at first I thought you meant it was for the clerk's office only.
He said from, not for.
All here in for the signature. Okay, and then... So this letter is us confirming to the Lloyd group, correct?
Okay.
I don't believe that sounded really good. Is there anything back on the sales?
Um, yeah.
Do you want another pen or you got ink yet?
Yeah.
Um, is, what is this in reference to?
Uh, FCO audit. Correct, Michelle?
What?
This is in reference to the FCO audit. Similar papers we signed here.
Well, I mean, it's a, is it a supplement to what was signed previously?
Uh, the previous one was for the point two audit, if I remember correctly. This is for the point three audit. In which if you would like to hang on to that, Scott will be here soon. Then you could ask him that question while he's here.
Yeah, 'cause...
No problem with that, huh?
Mike, I mean, I haven't finished reading it, but it's so, this is a letter to them from us, even though, I mean, he wrote it, but it's to him from us. So then all of these things in here, we are attesting to, right? That these are things we have done.
I have to sign that. Then I'll give it back to her.
Question, extension?
Yep.
Good, so we got approved for the extension, and that is for that change order that we had.
Good.
That reduced the overall cost of construction.
Cool. So we don't need, that says correspondence?
Uh, we'll have to sign this. This is here. There's no signatures on it.
Yeah, they're, let me see that.
Yeah, I visited with Scott. I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, that means, I will you review that. I'll allow Heather you can review that. This is a request to reduce the load amount for our CDVG grant for the sewer extension, sewer work that we're doing the sale away. If you recall, we got a change order in that amount, I think it was eighty-one thousand, what was it, by fifty seventy-five? And so we need to sign this form and send it back, return it, requesting that reduction in CDVG funds. Get to review that?
Just did.
Good?
Yep.
That motion to allow chairman to sign it?
Yes. I'll make the motion now the chairman sign, or I'll move to move to have the chairman sign the CDVG grant reduction form.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay?
You can say yourself law, Milwaukee, just bring him a folder. I'm signing up. You're gonna get a bunch of steps in it. You're gonna get ten thousand steps in today here.
Right. Okay, this is from OSH County Fire District Seven, Agency Township. Dear OSH County Commissioners and OSH County Clerk, After receiving incorrect information, we were advised that any changes regarding the board needed to be approved by the OSH County Commissioners. We regret that we are late in doing so, have submitted the following board position changes for your approval. These individuals have all been serving the district for some time now, and we appreciate the work they do for the fire district. We ask for formal approval of the following members. Resignation Sandra Sweetwood, new board member Brad Rose. Passway Teresa Turner, new board member Matt Sappel. Resignation Lynn Allen, new board member Randy Wilson. We appreciate your review of this information. Please let us know if you have any questions. Allen's our new fire board president. So we'll just need to move on approving their new board members. I will let you review that. Not let, not to you need my permission.
So, I think we've talked about this, but on those fire districts, we appoint them. Is there any, anything that qualifies them? Like, do they have to be, live in a certain area, have received that?
Yes, they have to be in that district.
I'm very aware of that, of those folks, and that's in cornmills, I haven't heard. I would move that we approve the appointment of the three names that you aforementioned read.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay? What'd you call these? The working life or something? You had a name for them?
I got in trouble when I said that, but it had something to do with the red light district. They're the red light, uh, whatever that, their sheriff wells, they'll tell us. Chris, what are these things called where they get their license to run it?
Designations.
There you go.
Randy Blue, permanent.
He was making up names. That was not close to what it was.
And so this is just for this one general, uh, for district four, correct?
Yes. They have to redo that every fiscal year.
So this is just a renewal?
Yes.
Yeah. So I will move to approve the renewal of the application for emergency vehicle designation for Owen Wells in County Fire District Four.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I think we all know who that guy might be.
Know who that guy is. Know who that guy is.
He might be okay.
I didn't know he was doing that.
I just thought to look at this for a second. One, I thought these names were the same, but then I looked at this and looked at this. But then I realized it's two different things. But they looked the same at first. What was the quote she had in there?
What's that?
So, Lord, God has seen that, but what was the quote?
Any issues here?
No, I would just ask that we state what it is and what it's for. For the public.
You're gonna move to do that?
Sure. I would move we approve the payroll changes. So I made a, I moved to approve the payroll changes, but I'm asking that we state the information on who it is and what it's for, departments and pay rates.
It's your motion. You can state it as you see fit.
Okay. That's my motion. You want me to go ahead and read them?
Yeah, you're moving to approve them. I'll read them.
Okay, so I would move to approve Christine Bell in the Sheriff's Department for Communications Officer. Step one increase, one year from eighteen thirty-one to eighteen fifty-six. And there's Noah Douglas in the jail, Corrections Officer, a new hire for eighteen eighty-eight. And we have Don Bristen, Bryston, in the jail as Corrections Officer for eighteen eighty-eight, which is a new hire.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Have they started yet, Chris? Or they just getting started?
Well, it started today, Deli.
Are you close to having a full staff back in the jail?
This doesn't, probably the next couple, few months, we need to start. So we get them trained and ready to go a little bit.
Les, what's the effect of me on that?
Effect of, yeah, three thirty-one to twenty-four?
Three twenty-one?
For Christine Bell, it says three.
I think he said thirty-one.
Three thirty-one to twenty-four?
Twenty-one? So it's on the pay grade?
We're gonna merge against them.
Okay. So all of our criteria first?
No. Doug, Noah Douglas, effective three fourteen. No, Doug, Noah Douglas, effect at three fourteen, twenty-four. And Dawn Bristen, zero fourteen, twenty-four. Now, of course, you'll, you have Michelle, we'll be all in charge. They're absolutely, you don't have to say that. I forgot that. I tried asking, that's an employee slip. We don't want anybody to. So you had a quote on here as well?
Yes. Did you ask me to bring down from last Monday?
Oh, yes, this is the no wait inside. This is what we talked about. They were gonna give us the new. Uh, and so you spoke with how many departments now that would like to see this?
Um, Chris has indicated we can utilize it, Dean said they can utilize it, we can utilize it. Tricia has started to begin to talk about it, never again. And that's as far as I'm.
As we already got the software all set up in place, it would need to be redoing the contract and then doing some training, correct?
Yes.
Just a little update of what this is. It's called no wait inside, and what it is is a way for people to be able to set up an appointment for a visit. They can call ahead, go online, set it all up, have an exact time and date set up, certain slot. Uh, this would help all the departments kind of control their days, manage their days better, eliminate the lines coming out of the treasurer's office, just for instance, 'cause that's the biggest issue we have right now, not to pick on her, but eliminate those lines coming out of there. There's also a walk-in feature. People can, if you decide you want to come over and show up, you can sign up, uh, get a number, and then somewhere up on that number's called if there's slots available.
So we talked about this last week, and this is the, they're already here, 'cause we had with the previous chair here, and I think we already owned the kiosk machine.
Yes, yes, that was filed, that was located.
So I think all of that, a lot of that stuff's already here. It's just a matter of whether you wanna have the implementation of the program again. I think when they talked last week, I have my notes in front of me, but here we go. There was, uh, forty to forty-five people that used the system in eight months. Now, I don't know how much it would increase if you used all the departments, but if we used it that way and it made more sense, and, 'cause it is, it, uh, I think the annual cost, if I have this correct, is forty-eight hundred, so it's four, four hundred dollars a month. Uh, but if it saved people time and created less confusion and less anxiety, then it would be worth every penny of it, but the question is, will they want it? Does it still take somebody? If we can't answer the, and my question still is, if we can't answer the phone, how do we answer computer text?
Well, and that is a model specifically.
Right.
They can, and actually the orphaned tested this too. I know that they had been working on getting the phones answered in a timely fashion, that she's also had some people down that's sick and kind of out of the office. I know there were only two of you in here on Friday, is that correct? Like, get some sicknesses come through Friday.
So what?
We've been fighting it for a little over two months, the illness.
What would your guess be on, if we, if we signed up for the no wait inside, what would the response time be to get back to a customer?
Oh, a what?
Well, actually, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. Now, uh, they don't have to respond back. Their, the app is set up to do that, and then you can put in all of your different slots and whatnot. So they would have to check them, and you have to go through and set up, create a, uh, your generic text message and email.
Right.
So they're auto-generated.
Now, are you talking about that no wait? The guys had displayed that I didn't know you were.
We didn't, it, it was here. It was just brought to our attention.
No, yeah, but I didn't know you were having a discussion on it last week.
Yeah.
Because I had received the bill from December of twenty-two and went like February of twenty-three when I was appointed in, I was appointed July, but I think I received it in August. So I did call, find out about that billing and stuff, and he said that those were two bills that had not been paid, and that supposedly everything else had been paid, and that the contract had ended prior to me being appointed. Um, I did ask multiple questions about it and stuff. Uh, he did say he could come down and do training. The only thing is, is he said I would have to have staff available, um, to help patrons and stuff the entire time standing by the kiosk, which I did not have staff at this time to stand by a kiosk and train, or to reply to phone calls to end with the information. And with all the corrections that we're having to do from previous years' issues, um, even transactions, to put them into the system, to put time slots, at this point in time, it's very difficult to do so, because a regular renewal or plate transfer can come in and be our discovery, just started popping up last week, where you guys had mentioned about hundreds of titles and checks being found in the office. Do you guys remember that?
I know that they found different things, yes.
Right, years, years.
I remember exactly, but yeah.
Years ago. Well, I have received two now, uh, just last week, um, where they were not approved, and I'm having to do research and try to find documentation and stuff so that I can properly approve those. So I'm praying that, that's not gonna be another issue where none of those were approved.
You're talking tags that were brought in to people that were not approved?
No, these are those titles that were found that you guys have mentioned to me before about.
You're talking titles that never got sent to customers?
Right, the titles, they was found up in the office, I guess, years ago, and you had somebody come in, get them in the systems and stuff.
I don't remember that.
I don't know, I just, what you guys had mentioned to me and stuff, but last week, I've had, well, one last week, one the other, maybe there's a Friday the day before, maybe they were both last week. Regardless, I've had two pop up now where, coming back from those years, that they have not been approved. And so I'm having to do research to check into it, reach out to the state if I can't find the paperwork and stuff, to get the proper, you know, so that they can be verified and approved correctly. Um, so I'm praying that all of those titles from previous is not gonna pop up, and if they do, and even without those popping up, you can't put a timeframe or time slots in that office right now, because as of today, I have closed motor vehicles down, 'cause my, uh, title, the one that works with titles and can do anything is out sick today. Usually, I'm in there, and I've been setting up for a waiting counter for the last two and a half months, but we have the auditor coming in today, we have those department head meetings and meetings with him, so I had to close the motor vehicle portion down. Um, and if there was scheduled times, those would get set out. Um, I know Michelle.
Well, would you have the opportunity to be able to let those folks know?
Right.
In the system, which would be kind of nice, because if you did have to close it, 'cause you're still, that people now, they're gonna be showing up here going, just.
Right, and we have.
But this is like a perfect example of why it would be a good system to have, 'cause then you can shoot an email out to all those appointments that you've got and say, hey, don't come in today, we're understaffed, and we can't take you, and you save them all a trip.
But that's also a, to be able to do that as well, sending it out to all of them, which, you know, I know it was mentioned, just put half an hour to an hour on a title. Um, that's figuring eight to sixteen titles in a day. Right now, we're, uh, doing twenty to twenty-plus, and if we're only doing eight to sixteen, it's gonna spread that over many days where we're actually able to walk, do walk-ins and get them through faster. And there again, in the one day, I was locked out, uh, kicked out of the system for forty, forty-five minutes. Granted, I would be able to count my time with that no wait anyway. Um, last Monday, the server line, big line, was at OSH County, County for Motor Vehicles, we were down for quite some time. So there again, all those appointments and stuff, how would that account for the next time slots and run out, and that would be making a lot more people upset, because they actually had times set, and.
Yes.
It's gonna make it look like our office did something, and.
The system gives you the opportunity to communicate that to those folks, instead of them just showing up to the door, and then you have to tell them face to face. This gives you the opportunity to shoot them an email and a text and say, hey, we're down, we just had emergencies, nothing we can do about it, we're saving you a trip. That's what we're trying to do, 'cause we're trying to, and if you process sixteen in a day, but you only had sixteen people show up, that's a win. If you processed twenty in a day, but you had forty people lined up at the door, that's a loss to me.
We have to.
You know, this is no different than dentists. I'm just using crazy numbers, 'cause they do that, 'cause most people don't, they just know the severity of the situation. I don't know that there was forty people exactly.
Last week was a little different though, 'cause when the system goes down, when, the system that went down last week wasn't the system at the state, it was the entire media com went down, 'cause I lost my computer, my phone system, everything. So in that case, people are gonna show up at their appointment, they're gonna be mad, because you can't communicate to them, 'cause, but that's one of those freak deals that happen.
Actually, it's not, because we are kicked down the system every day.
No, no, I'm talking about the.
Yes.
The system going down completely, meaning media com, the internet going down, because that's how, if you have the internet, you can still contact the customers. Now, the system getting cut down, I mean, that's whatever the.
Right, and that's, that's my concern right now with not having a full staff, is if that computer happens to go down and she's out for an hour or so, how are you gonna make that person's appointment up? Just kick everybody's back, and it's gonna kick the last few people out to where they don't get to do those?
I think it's one of those, I think this can actually be very effective. It's gonna be different offices that have different levels of traffic, like yours has a lot of traffic, so, but it's worth, I think, trying, even if you only put a few appointments on. You don't have to put a day's worth, you could start with just a handful. And the other thing is when walk, there's gonna be people who don't wanna do online, they wanna walk in, but they, I under, if I understand it right, when it was presented, when Christine brought it forward, is that people who show up here can sign into the kiosk. So if they're just a walk-in, they can sign in and it puts them in the queue, and so it's gonna intermingle in between the appointment times and then, but maybe they sign into the queue and it says, well, it's an hour before you're gonna get in. They might go run another errand and come back or something, I don't know. But it's worth trying, that would help streamline a little bit of that, and for people who do want the appointments, um, you could start with a handful and see how it works, and then troubleshoot things that work and things that don't work. The question I had on it was, I, when Christine brought it last year sometime, was it just, was our pricing just for the clerk's office that time, or was it also for anyone who wanted to use?
It was just for the clerk's office, but we could add it at the other times, and we had never got to the point where we talked to the other departments. Now, I think the other departments are aware of what it is.
So she's, you said you've talked to three or four of them that were interested. So if, do we know how many, if she talks to the other departments that it would work for them, is there a limit on how many departments we can, is there like?
It was set in that bundle of how many can be patients. It was a big chunk.
Big chunk, okay.
Right.
Kind of came on a T O system, so it's.
Problem will be the kiosk machine, is they all, we all have one.
That was the question.
It's gonna be tough to move it around.
The departments we necessarily need is.
Correct. I think the one that needs it is probably that office. And the thing is, when they do walk in, they can sign into that, and if it says it's gonna be a three-hour wait, they can go do whatever, they can schedule, or they can schedule for the next day. It may have, we may have to have somebody up there to walk them through it, for some people, like myself included.
That's what I was told by, I think you're gonna be surprised if you don't, so I mean.
And if we do, that's where we ask for help from another department, if we need to, if you guys are that busy, we ask for help from another department to help them set that thing up through there. I mean, I think there's ways to do this, that we could find out real quick whether it's good or bad.
Well, I've been with the one kiosk, I kind of thought about that, but hers probably is, it probably needs to be here in the courthouse. People can sign in when they come in, and I guess if we found we needed another one, we can add one, but I can see how, I think most of the departments are gonna be fine. It's mainly gonna be.
You could literally set the kiosk downstairs at the security station and say, hey, this is how many people are up there waiting. Do you wanna go ahead and sign up for an appointment? You don't have to make the trip upstairs, they can just do it right there and maybe organize it that way, and for the other offices, everybody will know where you're already at, so.
The other thing that would be really nice is if it got to where it worked really well, and there was a lot of appointment times, I think it could spread out the end of the month and the first of the month, 'cause a lot of people wait till the end of the month to come to their tax, so there's tons of people here, and then if they didn't get it done, they come on the first. And so that also may spread that out, that if people can online make an appointment or whatever, maybe that will spread that out where, 'cause, you know, a couple weeks ago, when I was here, I went upstairs on Friday, and it was packed. I mean, there was tons of people in the foyer, but then on Monday, I came for my appointment, I had to go up, I think, talk to Linda or whatever, there was one customer and nobody waiting, so you went from Friday where it was nuts to Monday with nobody, and I'm like, if there's any way we can spread that out, I think, um, it'd be great for the treasurer's office, it'd be great for the public, that if they can sign up for appointments and it spreads them out and not have to wait. It's balancing the walk-ins with the appointments, it's, but I think we can troubleshoot through that. So, and I think people will love to sign up online, and, uh, people that live close to Lynn, it's not that big a deal, but people that live in other parts of the county, and it's twenty miles to get here, I think they'd love to sign up online. So, anyway, I like this idea, I liked it when Christine had brought it, I like the idea of expanding it to any offices that want to use it, and it's just another advance in modern technology, I guess. Oh, here's this, and I'm guessing it would just be from the courthouse fund, or what would be the department, since it's shared.
Right. Six cents per message sent empty. Message usage cost outside of message block will be billed monthly. We offer discount pre-purchase of blocked messages with increments of five thousand. Unused messages purchased in a block expire one year after purchase. Per usage message costs are only applicable once a pre-purchased message block has been exhausted. N W I will notify OSH if it appears their message usage will exceed any pre-purchased amount. They offer discount pricing for annual contracts, ten percent discount for three year, five percent discount for two years.
So.
I don't think we would wanna try it one year, and then we would have the opportunity to review or not, if it just didn't work.
On the five thousand messages, that's outgoing messages, or is it just?
Yeah, sent and received, it states.
And that's an annual amount? So for people going online and signing up, that's considered a message?
Yes.
Okay. Five thousand. It's not a lot. What is it after that?
And then it looks like opposed to cost, that's when it's breaking down, and then in the fine print, it said, per usage message only applicable once pre-purchased message block has been exhausted. Use of kiosks and signage in tandem can significantly, significantly reduce the number of messages required for visit. Twenty-five thousand messages will cover two to four messages sent to eighty-three hundred appointments. This cost does not reflect in the first year's annual cost. As OSH purchased twenty-five thousand messages on a past contract that have not been utilized, it is not a full potential discount. So when we first signed that, there apparently twenty-five thousand messages purchased. And a message block is three hundred, five thousand message block is three hundred dollars for that purchase.
Well, we don't need that now, 'cause we've got twenty-five thousand, so.
I would like for my office, because it's kind of being brought up here all at once. I had discussed it back in July. Um, I would probably like to reach out to some of the other treasures and stuff, find out pros cons, how it worked for them, and see how that went, where did it go, 'cause I know one treasurer that I had spoke to at the time, um, they used to have it, but. but she mentioned it was more hassle than what it was worth. And a couple other who had said that with the corrections that we're trying to do and we cannot put exact timelines. I know you said just to do a couple. I would like a little bit more time to have, to be able to reach out and do a little bit more research, especially since this is going to affect my office closely. And I would like to, I'd like to check into a little bit more. Because when you guys brought this up last week, I was not given any information that was going to be discussed or brought about. And it's just a week, so I can do some research.
We can approve to move forward with this and then you can get on board at any time. This isn't correct. I mean, it's not something, just because we, if we want to get the other offices going today, it doesn't mean your office is doing it today.
Okay.
And this is just something you can...
Or do they even have like a, because I know you guys had mentioned about being a core contract that has never used, which was a waste of taxpayers' money.
Well, it's part of the use because people in your office...
For the other offices and stuff.
That's the thing is...
If they don't have them in the flow that we do, or as much corrections that they're trying to correct from past years and stuff. So theirs would probably go a lot easier, but I was just thinking as far as my department jumping in and there was like a one-month trial to see even if the other departments liked it. So that we weren't jumping into a full one-year or a three-year contract that may waste the taxpayers' money.
Well, I think...
I think we're wasting the taxpayer's money by having a bunch of people standing in line trying to get their business done. And I think we have a clear issue and we're trying to find a solution. I think we have a good one.
And I think because so many other departments are interested in it, we bring it on, they get started with it. It probably will implement a lot quicker and easier. They might be able to troubleshoot some things. And then, you know, if Laura decides to come on, we'll have a little bit of that experience. And then we can maybe come online slowly and see how it goes. But I, I think people will really, as technology is changing how we function and provide services, I think so many people, they, especially the younger people, they don't like to make phone calls. They want to go online and do things. And it's just, we're providing the service for two different types of people. You've got the people that want to call and show up in person, and you have the people who want to do as much online. And so this is kind of bridging that gap.
So, am I correct? This one year, we can sign up for one year. It says one-year annual cost is four thousand eight hundred dollars for that one year. There wasn't anything else? Because they're giving us, it looks here, it says annual messaging block fifteen hundred a year. They've weighed that due to what we've already purchased on this in. Because this, they, and they took out, yeah, there it is right there. So we do, you are correct, we have twenty-five thousand message block.
So we're going to get credited that?
Seven-five email.
We're going to get credited that?
Right, right. So I will move to approve to enter into one-year contract with no wait inside in the amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars to be utilized by each office as they see fit, as it works best for them.
Second.
It's right here. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor. I oppose, motion carries. Uh, let's look, do some research and see which one of them, I think it's going to come out of four thousand. And that'll give you a little time there, Laura, you know, you can poke your head into another office and see how it's working.
We had a recess point, we're going to try and address it a little bit.
Yes, we will go to recess for five minutes at this time.
We will first start off with PO three nine five seven. I will move to approve to be paid to no wait inside for one year contract. The amount of forty-eight hundred dollars we paid from the courthouse general.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion yes. Michelle, Tricia.
Hello.
Good morning.
We have our first township.
Yay.
Tell it to the chair.
Oh, yeah. So after the county township meeting, are you, I mean, is there a way to follow up with each of those and see if they have questions?
I have their contact information, so I figured in the next couple of weeks I'll start.
Do you, have we been able to compile all the contact information for all the townships?
Michelle, was it you that had the list for everybody to sign? Um, was it Ryan? That was Ryan, I guess. I've been making changes since I went along because I know that some of them, like I look at it and like I know.
So how many townships are signed up currently?
One.
Which is?
Well, I thought Ridgeway and Superior signed up.
I think Superior signed up.
Ridgeway and Superior.
Yeah.
And I think Ridgeway.
Yeah, I was thinking from the meeting.
You mean.
So are we reaching out to the other one? We've, I know several of them have reached out, so I'm assuming we're getting them signed up pretty quick.
Yes.
I mean, I know they have to go to their meeting to do all their stuff first, so.
And that's why I wanted to wait a couple of weeks because their meetings are all staggered at different times. So I'm not.
Do you need a motion for that, or?
Yes.
I would move that we allow the chairman to sign the inner local agreement for the NRP without township.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Good job. Thirteen more to go.
Did we get confirmation from Scott about eleven o'clock?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I've been.
He's usually on time.
I did. I'll have a little big construction interview, no post L.A.
Gotcha. So you guys have something you'd like to share outside of the Scott Lloyd stuff?
Sure, I've been something else up. It was just Aunt Jimmy. I've been checking into a Meeker printer so that we could get Meeker checks and stuff and, um, because as it is right now, they're pre-printed. So if a copier takes two checks at once, it, you have to avoid all of them if it's like for distribution and stuff. Um, to where using the Meeker, uh, it prints the numbers on the checks as it goes. So it saves a lot of money in checks and also it'd be a new printer that goes with it, which that's one of the issues. I'm having to print checks one at a time because it takes and eats one of them and messes up all the other checks. So this is an invoice or a price quote of what it would be for that one. And that one would be just to our office specific, so it wouldn't be in on the internet because I know there was issues prior. Um, and it was just set up for one computer anyway because other departments was able to choose that printer and then checks will be in, made on, uh, okay. Uh, yeah, on the, yeah.
So this is just the printer we're about, does it take some kind of special paper?
Uh, they're going Meeker checks, yeah.
How much are they?
Um, the toter's on there, the checks.
This didn't have any checks on it, did it?
I do not have a quote for it, like I said, he, he just gave it to me as far as that goes. Um, checks I've been visiting with, uh, Navrat's with, with, uh, because he's been, they've been doing the regular checks.
And your purchase of those is pretty much, anyway, the cost is pretty much going to be the same with the checks because you already have to purchase checks.
Right, and they should be less because they're not.
Right.
They should be less.
How many of those are, how many of those other checks do we have left?
Um, actually, we're close to two seventy and we can still work those through. I have plans on these and all of those up.
Well, and that might be able to go through the tech fund. Can I go through the tech fund?
Yeah, I actually led for a few, we lived about last week and I told them to get a couple.
So that'll be, so it's exclusive to your office to print checks?
Yeah.
Yes, and it will make the printing go faster?
Oh, yes.
And it won't be interrupted by other people submitting the printing?
Correct, correct.
And I apologize, I thought you guys weren't at that capability, so to me.
No, no, I've been having to print checks one at a time.
Right.
Because if I put more than one, it will pick up two and then I have to avoid checks and, yeah, it's been, it's been a hassle.
Well, if you would put that on a PO and connect to it, I'd be happy to see it that way.
Okay, do you have a PO, please?
I know this is going to sound weird, but I don't think there's a tech fund in that department.
I think they each have one. I think the clerk, deed and treasure all have tech funds, don't they?
Mm-mm.
Clerk, treasure.
Yeah, they all have.
Is there a tech fund in treasure?
Clerk, treasure and deeds.
Okay.
They all have.
Good.
I was thinking it was called something else in each one of those. I might want to look it. If you could tell me what fund number that would be, I would appreciate it because I don't believe there's a tech fund in the treasurer's office. Bring one for everybody? You didn't write.
If you didn't run, let's sit back there like.
You didn't get one either?
I don't know.
I got some warm Dardar's burger. Semi-cold.
You didn't see anything this time?
I did not.
There you go.
And I can usually find something if I look hard enough. Where's Shiny?
Excuse me.
Did you run?
No.
I would say if you was running, I was going to ask you if you was driving a white Bronco and was.
Yeah, I got you and I'm not.
You're fine asking away, you've got him for eleven, you've got eight minutes at this time.
I'd like to use a little bit of the eight minutes if I can and I'll finish that. Um, yeah, I'll finish. Uh, I want to let people know that the distribution is out. Um, it was to the bank, the money will be dispersed on the twentieth.
This is the March twentieth? This is the March, Dr. Tricia?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be distributed ahead of time. Um, so that's out. The other thing was antiques, I've been having other people ask about antiques. Those buildings have not came out in multiple lot. Um, but anyhow, the distribution's out, so.
Thank you.
That should be for all the antiques.
Okay, I will move to approve purchase order three nine five six in the amount of eight hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents for a Troy Meeker printer and three thousand one Meeker toter to be paid from the treasurer's tech fund to, I assume, it's, no, Troy three. Motion's been made and seconded.
Uh, did you find the treasurer's tech fund?
No, not yet.
I think that's going to have come out of the courthouse, out of the courthouse building fund. Because I don't think there's a tech, I don't think there's a treasurer's fund, tech fund. Maybe it was in the motor vehicle and I think there's different funds for each one of these, but I've never recalled here.
I had to do an update, so I'm waiting for it to kick back up so I can see it.
And we can always, just put in the, put it in whichever fund.
Questions?
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just trying to save my headache later when I go back to look.
Yeah.
I think it was just you and I at that meeting, so I don't know if others did.
Do you have PBC minutes, too?
Uh, I do not, well, those were meeting before. This was last Monday when it was just you and I, we didn't have a PBC.
Six nine five.
Oh, boy, so they have an update. But I don't think we did any of those, did we? I was saying it was a meeting before that.
Okay, I will move to approve the regular meeting minutes for March eleventh, four twenty-four.
Hold on just a minute, I have a question on that. Well, I read the minutes, can I not ask a question on the minutes?
Certainly can.
Um, under the land development, Tricia Webb requests, it says presented information, but what was, what was presented?
It is included with the minutes, a copy of what was presented.
It was a conference.
That's what she wrote or does that?
On March eleventh and it says, land development, Tricia Webb, and then it says presented information. Did she, did she present something like?
She presented information on a, uh, a training seminar that was done in Latha that we approved her to go to.
Right.
So she went to it, she was given.
No, she's going to.
No, she's going, yeah.
Okay, but we'd already approved it?
We approved it at that meeting.
Oh.
For her to get, she brought the paperwork showing us what it was and we approved her to attend.
So can we add that?
It's a training.
If, I mean, was it a PO?
Or no?
Matter of fact, I don't think there had to be anything because it's not.
It's training for her office.
Okay, so can we just add a little bit of information, even if it's not a PO, what it was, what type of training?
You're going to have to ask her because I have no idea, I did not get the flyer, so.
Training.
I have no idea.
Set that. That she will be attending.
Well, I can find and make sure which money, how much, before I, I don't want to, maybe just give it back to you.
Okay. And then Tricia was, uh, moved to development director, land development director, and was there any pay rate associated with that increase?
It went to the pay rate of the previous one, yes, I believe it was twenty, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should include that on there.
You don't have to include it in that year.
It was included in the motion to put it at that rate, yes.
So, yeah, if it included a pay raise, it should be in there with the motion. Do you know what the pay rate was, was it the?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Do I need to change that though?
I'm making a note, you're going to add a pay rate.
Because it started on the twenty-first, or it starts the twenty-first of this month.
Hi, really, as both of you just said.
There you go. As much as we stated. What's that, side of the floor?
Okay, so will that include the rate of pay, I guess is my question.
It stated that in the motion, didn't it?
My motion stated what, at the pay rate of the previous one, which was, I know what it was, it was twenty, so it doesn't matter, but we quit doing that a while back and we started it again today, I guess, I don't know what.
No, we're not actually, and we've already, motion's been made and seconded to approve the March eleventh, twenty-four meeting minutes with the changes.
It's second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it going to list the increase in the pay rate?
It says as stated as previous director, yes, in his motion. It does not say dollar amount.
Can we put the dollar amount?
No, because it doesn't say in his motion.
Can we amend that?
It says as motion, no.
I'd have to go back to that prior meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, from what we did that, we were discussing Star Chamber, so. We've never had this much conversation about it, except for when we had it in the very beginning, when we did have a conversation about it.
I think I should be able to discuss my perspective on things.
You absolutely can, so we have a meeting to conduct, we need to keep rolling.
And if we disagree, then we can disagree, but we need to work through those things, but the meetings are the only times.
Yeah, we keep bringing up the old stuff that we've already worked through, we've been doing it since January.
The meetings.
And now it's an issue.
The meetings are the only time that we are to talk about conversations and our perspectives on things. And I don't remember a conversation asking me my thought if we were no longer going to list financial information, whether it's purchasing things.
I would.
Whether it's people's pay increases or decreases, I don't remember a conversation about that.
To try to speed this up, I would ask you either go back and watch some previous meetings and you'll notice it's been that way since the first year. On the other one where you want me to change a motion, I can't make a motion from a meeting that you never attended, by the way, in the first place, so I'm not going to go back and change a motion. If you would like to be involved, either zoom in or be here at the meetings when we have them. Good morning, Mr. Lloyd.
Good morning. We will get one last, did you have questions on the bills?
Yes, I'm not done, so I would like to save those to the end so we can.
Forget sending these out, everybody. Michelle. Okay, we will move on. Mr. Lloyd?
Good morning, how are you? Real estate, uh, in pain.
Yeah.
I've, uh, you know, broke my rib and then, um, for some reason, a week and a half ago, my shoulder blade has this, I don't know if it's a pinched nerve or what, so I've been in severe pain now for a week and a half, going to physical therapy. So I'm, I'm probably overthinking on ad bills.
There you go.
Not good.
That doesn't sound like my phone.
No, so anyway, we're going to get to her.
Can we start with the receiving? Can we start with the receiving conversation because?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, I could grab one thing, I don't know if I should, I don't know, I got a briefie.
You guys can come up if you want, so that way they can, the mic will pick up, so people can hear.
This is just a real rough draft. We can do a lot of, just, uh, this is what you can do.
So after, was that two weeks ago, three weeks ago? After you read Linda's report and I went upstairs to visit with her after that and just asked some questions, and so from Linda and a little bit of input from Colleen and then with Laura, they had some recommendations on some changes to receiving that they think will help improve the balances of the fund balances. So as they were telling me that, I asked, I said, would you like this to be a agenda item on the commission where they can bring their thoughts and ideas and maybe what their thought is on how we proceed? And then I reached out to Scott and visited with him about it and he thought it would be a really good idea and he also believed it would help, um, clean up and make the fund balances more accurate. So he also reached out to a couple of counties that he thought might be good resources, for examples of how they do the receiving, and both of those counties he reached out to, he didn't feel like were good examples. Um, so I think you said you're going to check with.
I'll check with the.
With Atchison, he knows the finance director there. And so he's going to check with them to see if maybe they have a good example to start with. And then I think you said you brought.
So what?
An idea also.
Well, what this is, it's very, it's very simple, but, uh, I just, I mean, I literally whipped it up and I thought all we could do is make it an Excel spreadsheet you send out to the department heads. And then what they can do, this is blank, but they could go in and put their account number, they could put their, you know, everything already filled in and all they have to do then is just go in and put the, the dollar amount and then one of these sheets, something like this anyway, not just like this, but something like this would go in with every deposit they make into the county treasurer. Because what you see like in twenty-two's, we'll see it when we go through some things here with the training this afternoon, like miscellaneous with six hundred and ten thousand, you know, it just, it wasn't broke out and we were talking about it, they literally, they just grouped it all together, they, they didn't really care what line items, uh, at that point, so.
So can they present kind of what your thoughts were and then just?
Absolutely, yeah, I just, I just, I just looked, I've looked at something like this, I just couldn't find one that they did, but literally took me less than, you know, ten minutes to put something like this together. And it doesn't have to be this, just something to let, help the department heads know they have to have a detail, not just go throw it in there and we don't know where it's at.
What we found is a lot of, uh, the money that's been received and like you said, goes over to miscellaneous receipts. Well, when that is done, you can't pull them out for reports, you can't go back and track how much money was for this area versus, uh, within the departments. Most of them are go, are going into general and then miscellaneous receipts. I would like a description so that if somebody wants to know main and lateral, this is an example, I know it has its own fund, but main and lateral and it's this dispersment one for the grant that we just had. Just more descriptions so that if there is a question, we can actually go back and track it and be able to find it, it'll help with budgeting, um, for their new budget years, it'll help the auditor a lot, the commissioners and the people to actually know where the money is going, where it's at, will be able to track it much easier and these forms will help us. As it is, it comes in, uh, no, the departments usually do not write down the fund number, so then we have to go back, we have to try to figure out where it goes, what it's actually for, and that is extremely time consuming.
So this is money that goes directly to a department, not necessarily, like if we had federal land entitlement money that goes straight to the treasurer.
So it'd be just like, for example, it could be a health department, you know, any fees they collect?
Right.
Or any kind of grants or anything that come directly to them as a check and, uh, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't be an ACH, it would basically be anything that comes to their office.
Right.
Roden Bridge would be the same way, like if there were certain things that went to their office, they would bring it in and have to have something. To this point, it's not been, uh, for last, I don't know, probably a couple, three years at least.
Seven years.
Uh, has not been done that way and what I found when I talked to these other two counties, they all have very experienced staff. Well, once you, as they said, we just count on the county treasurer because we know what they get and that's, that's why, and I think that's another challenge, but I don't, I would not recommend that. I would rather have something like this as an auditor, you know, that they, they know exactly, it doesn't put it to guess on the county treasurer. Uh, and goodness, it, it saves them an incredible amount of time if they would, if department heads would do that on the fees they collect at their office.
So Linda, one of the things you talked about was that each department would need to come up with their line items for their receiving, because some departments may have three or four areas where they receive money for certain, whether it's services or products or something or things sold. Other departments may have a lot of areas. So how, what is a recommendation of how we assist those departments in cre, because you believe that departments need to create their own, what they want? Um, is that something that, from your end and your knowledge with the detailed of objects or chart of accounts, what's the best way to assist those departments in, in moving through that? And what are your thoughts on it?
Do you have some ideas on that? I have an example.
Okay.
Yeah, just use it, yeah, whatever you got.
So the land department, they bring money and here's, they go, here, could I tell one, please, so one. Oh, wow, that's general.
Yeah.
It's a general fund, everything goes in that line.
Mm-hmm.
So if they want, you know, like Laura said, we're, we're going to dig that out.
Right.
But they don't know, they don't know what to put, they don't know.
Yeah.
They, they need to be educated in what kind of revenues they need, what kind of revenue lines they need according to their, and so.
According to the statutes, because some of their money has to be kept completely separate from other and so they need to know their statutes as far as what.
So it's something like that.
Something like she does when she receives the money, she already breaks it out.
Mm-hmm.
She's got, she's already got an example of, this is what I, this is what I did. So can we have a revenue line for each one of those?
Oh, I see.
So they're already maybe doing it somewhere.
So you, so the, the key is to start at the fund level because like you would have three or four funds that would have different receipts coming in, the Roden Bridge, Solid Waste, you know, all those different ones. Uh, and then start at the fund level because you've got to break it out by fund, because that's kind of what happened with federal land entitlement, they got put in the wrong, wrong place back then, so that's why we had to figure out where it's at.
So then it's something like, let's, let's say she has, right now she's got four areas where she brings in money, so let's say there's three or four more. These, there would be seven items, as it comes in, she would have to use the sheet, fill out.
So in advance, the way I see it happening, in advance, she would have every one of those line items identified to a general ledger line item.
And they each have a different number?
Yes, yes.
So then at the end of the year, if you wanted to run a report for just land development and say, how much do we bring in in zone?
That's right.
How much should we bring in in neighborhood revitalization? We would be able to see those.
That's right.
Revenues.
And these sheets could be made specific to each department, so they all are filled in.
Yes.
All they have to do is put the dollar amount over here at the side.
Okay.
And then I put a column like, it'd be kind of nice to have the, uh, treasurer, when they, when they deposit, they check it off and that's their record, both, they get a copy probably to go back with them and you would have a record too or something.
Actually, we have a form like that.
Okay.
Already, sorry, let me take it.
It's just where the other departments aren't putting the, the funds numbers and stuff.
Yeah.
And when they bring it in, we count the money.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, when they bring it in, they put down whether it's checks or cash and then. Uh, actually, when they bring it in, they put down, whether it's checks or cash, and then they initial it.
Yep.
And then we check it, and then we initial it as to where the treasurer's receiving that amount of money. If we can get those funds, the numbers in there, and also separating them, so it's not going into miscellaneous receipts-
That's right, absolutely.
Or, or just general, that will help with all those, uh, reports, so that the individual departments know where their money is, and it'll help with budgeting for the future, and it'll help the auditor, auditor tremendously.
So, we would be able to see money coming in in each department that's-
Exactly.
Non-property tax revenue, it'd be other avenues of revenue that we could see what's coming into those departments. In your email you sent me, you said something about, I think you said it, when people would bring stuff in, they would need to have this reconciled with, so they're gonna be doing the legwork, making sure everything matches, and so whatever they brought in that day and week, it's gonna be reconciled, then they bring it to them, and they're able to double check it, and then if all the line items are there, that's where you guys just literally go down the list and enter it.
Right, we enter it and stuff, and then we give them back a receipt so that they can have their receipt for their records.
Absolutely.
So, I'm back to my other question. How do we help and support each office on getting a good-
Take a training session, I mean, this is really, should be required probably earlier, but there's a lot of things that happen too, so, to me, if, I don't know, if it's me or if it's somebody here that sits down with each department and takes their Excel spreadsheet and says, what, what line item, what fund, and what line item on the general ledger match up? Do not use miscellaneous, I mean, miscellaneous should have X's through it, okay? Because that's the last resort, okay?
And there's a lot of items already in there, it's just they're not being utilized.
Well, that was my question is, is-
There's hundreds-
Cleaning that up, like, what do we get rid of, what gets entered, yeah?
What I've done is printed out the entire-
Chart of accounts.
And there's four hundred and sixteen. I've been working with each department head, starting with the two largest ones, going through, I don't use this, I use this, but we haven't used it for three years because it's no longer needed.
Yep.
Tweaking to remain with something, so they're very clear for someone that just walks in off the street or taking a new position. There's, there's no mistake in what should go into that fund. Somebody was gracious enough a couple of years ago to hit copy, and copy every single line item through the whole entire system. So, my game permits, cereal beverage, it's through forty, fifty different funds. So, all those have to be-
Can you uncopy?
Done, every single one of them. But it's-
So, like last year, so last year what happened, if you remember, well, you weren't here, let's see. You were.
Hey.
Not in that department.
I was here.
Well, not in, not in the training, not in the training, because what we did is we had somebody from CIC do that, you know, that budget module thing? And then what I did is I actually, uh, printed out, because I looked, I looked at, I go, man, I got that much documents last year? It was actually the CIC, uh, all the receipt, all those, and you were exactly right, it had, it had stuff in every fund that would never even be using that fund, no way, so, I think, I forget, a hundred and fifty-eight pages or something, it was an unbelievable amount.
So, Linda, do you have any counties that you would recommend us reach out to that you think do a good job with receeding, I mean, do you have any knowledge of?
They're, I mean, they're probably similar, but kind of tailored to your own, because like they call their stuff zoning fees. Maybe somebody else calls it just zoning permits. So, you know, it's, it's kind of specific to each county, so each apartment probably has an idea, it could just sit down and out.
And they have so far.
So, okay, so with that, with the, all the different departments, if they get what's already in the system now printed for them, they can go through and things they for sure know they don't need, just get rid of those to start with? And then if there's things they need that aren't on there, those can be added? So, what's realistic?
One thing we do with that too is, uh, the budget would be a good place to start, to see if there's any receipts there that aren't on the general ledger. If they aren't on the budget, they still could be on the general ledger, because it could be grouped together, like service fees, it's called on Health Department. Service fees on the budget, the state budget is just a one line. But on the detail, they may want it broke down more than that, like, uh, different, like shots, I, I don't, I don't, I can't think of all of them off the top of my head, but you know, shots, or, you know, you want a little more detail so they can manage it. But that would be something they would decide how far they want to go on the detailed general ledger. And, and, and as long as it matches up that, then the audit report doesn't really matter, and she's right, every county, every city, if you call, literally, a lot of times it's not even the same, same name, it's whatever, it's kind of whatever, it's probably what, Birmingham, probably been used for, you know, forever, so. Anything like that where she's cleaned it up would be, that would be awesome, I mean-
Even just deleting, starting with deleting all the extras.
So, you can't really delete, you can end it and, that way nobody can put it into it, but you have to wait until when you're over twenty-five for it to disappear. So, there's ways you can run a report, exclude zeros, things like that.
And can you make certain items inactive? I know like on my QuickBooks, I've got-
That's by putting end dates in.
I've got a bunch of junk stuff in there, so I make things inactive, and then they don't show up.
Then they get those to it.
Oh, okay, okay.
But they will show up, if you print all, it will show up, you can't get rid of-
So, what Michelle's doing is awesome, because if she can go through and take the general ledger and clean it up and say, this stuff never existed or doesn't, I mean, shouldn't exist, and then you start matching it up and making sure whatever there's left in that department is on the receipt, whatever you decide to use, I mean, it, it's, it's not rocket science, I mean, it's like, put all the line items there, you match them up, and you're, you're tied up.
Well, and I have another question. You know, as they bring stuff in and we're working through, there'll be some little bumps in the road. As they bring stuff in, and if you guys had questions that said, wait a minute, I really still don't understand this, you get that feedback, and if they're explaining it, you could go, oh, well, that needs a line, because that is separate from this other, I mean, is that something that could also occur as they're, as they build it, and then if you guys start seeing, oh, this needs to be more-
The Sheriff's Office, we're talking to them, he's even going to provide, I think he's gonna provide the Treasurer's Office statutes, because he has funds that-
Need to go to certain places.
And if he provides that to her, we can put that in some sort of procedural manual, so that, one, we don't move money in or out of there that shouldn't be in or out. And that money goes in there, and we don't close that fund, and it'll be there for a future. So, any, any funds that are required by statute, it would be nine-
So, you're talking like the nine-one-one fund and stuff like that?
Yeah.
And they can add it to-
The Sheriff, Roden Bridge, Health are probably the, the ones that have more stuff happening. Like, Redshirt Beads would have probably copies and I don't know, something else.
Yeah, a lot of the departments will be small, they, I mean, I think the little departments could, those could get done, they could get decided pretty quick. The other departments with a lot, it's, they gotta really think through it.
But they also pretty, know pretty much what they use and what they need to do with them, so they're very strong in that, they're used to us. It's just making sure, because we, you know, we don't create the line items and stuff, or create their, for their departments, we just need to make sure to get it receiveded in properly, and we want to make it to where it's easier for the departments to, to go back and look to make sure that it was applied, because we're having to go back years-
Right.
To, to go back and track to see if that money was put in that one, or if it was put in this one incorrectly, and we're having to correct all of those, to where this will prevent that.
Well, and to add to that, as we progress in using the system and learning more features, if each of the departments have access to their expenditures and receeding, even if it's in a read-only status, they can be going in and checking and on however often, they can look at their expenditures and go, oh, wait a minute, that, that's not something of mine, or, ooh, I got somebody else's receipt in my department, and so, with this, they could be looking at that in a detailed capacity regularly, and if there are areas where there's issues, they can be dealt with regularly.
And it also, once they get on sync here with the treasurer and the, and the clerk, when they do their daily balancing, I mean, goodness gracious, that'll help tremendously, because, uh, you're looking at, you know, what line item goes into and making sure it's right, and that's a double check, so, yeah.
Checks and balances between the departments that is required.
Yep.
So, what's a realistic timeline to really get it implemented? And what's the best next step between the two offices and Scott?
Mine is easy, because we're doing the receeding, the hardest is-
You're doing the data entry.
Yes, the, the hardest is the, each department looking at their areas and working on the shell to figure out what they need to do.
Add it or-
I think after the research of statutes and what can be left, and what has to be left a certain amount of time.
I mean, like that, like that, if you have questions, you just, you just reach out to John, and I mean, like on that, John or I will, will try to answer those, those types of questions.
He's printed some stuff for me already.
Yeah, yeah.
Then as you work with the departments, kind of guiding them as to what they need to be doing, and then have to answer further questions and tell me what I need to do.
Is that a dual purpose thing, when he's working with them this afternoon on their budgets and their revenue lines?
I'm gonna be taking notes, going to that, so where I can know what I need to do.
Is, is there a way to start, where maybe the first thing each department does, and I know the bigger departments are a lot harder, but the smaller ones, can they just have a questionnaire that just fills out, where are all your revenue sources? And just start listing them, whether they're a company or whether they're fees or-
Doing that.
That's what we're doing.
That's, yeah, that's what we're doing.
That's why the book's printed out, we're highlighting and making notes with the whole thing, and then when I, with every page, where every page is accounted for, and every single line has a delete, rename, leave it alone mark on every single one, on all four hundred and sixteen of them, then we'll do that.
Yep.
So, do those departments have those? Do each of the departments have that?
They are coming to my office, some of the bigger ones, like Roden Bridge and here, have kind of worked their own, because they're massive. But I'm just talking to each individual department.
Yeah, that's awesome.
A lot of them don't know, they don't understand this whole copy all the way through thing, why do they have, why does the Health Department have DUI kits in it?
Yeah.
Because somebody hit copy. Why does Sheriff have cereal beverage license? Well, because somebody hit copy, they don't understand that. They're gonna have to talk to somebody that can explain what happened, so.
It's great to have Linda too, because you understand the system, that, that's, that part of it's really nice, because, um, and, and just trying to get it cleaned up, once you get it cleaned up, then that's when I think you would, I mean, you want to start the training as soon as possible when you're meeting with them, but once you get the general ledger cleaned up, the reports you've been asking for for like, probably three years.
Four, yeah, three years and, uh, what is, three years and three months?
So, like, those reports are no good if you have all that extra junk in there.
Yeah.
Uh, so, just that, that whole thing of getting it cleaned up and then start, it's probably gonna be a process. Make sure this is the way you get it reported to her at the Treasurer's Office, then this is what your cash report looks like, if you have a separate fund. Here's what your budget to actual looks like, when you have your expenditures and your receipts, and if you're, you know, like you said, you look into it on read only and you go, why don't we have more receipts in here, we had this much last year, we should have this much this year? Oh, it got, it got put in the wrong, you know, line item or, or whatever, so they'll have a way of actually starting to kind of track it and help you all.
So, with that Excel spreadsheet that he just made, is that something you guys can look at and maybe customize it to you, what you would like to see come to your department and what all it would?
Right, but like I said, we already have one of their, it's just that the departments don't know their, their numbers and stuff for their funds.
Is it in there?
So, they just, it's general miscellaneous or miscellaneous receipts. Well, the, using miscellaneous receipts in general, that's not helping the departments know where their actual money is.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, with his document, can we customize that to us for what we're moving forward with?
Right.
Okay.
I can, I can send it, it's not, it's not, and you may already have an Excel, you have an Excel spreadsheet? Because what I think would be nice is each one of them, each department goes in on Excel and fills out those, like, when they figure out what account, once you get it cleaned up, once they figured it out, each one is specialized to that. That they don't come in and write them in later, just have them all done.
Right.
Because you're not gonna, you're just gonna have the same receipts.
So, you're gonna have a pre-printed form basically, and then you're just gonna fill in each one?
They just put in what the amounts are.
For that department, that deposit.
Yeah, and those, uh, fund numbers can even be listed on there, and then they're just writing whether it's cash, check, and the total.
And in the event a new revenue source starts, then that department would need to ask for that to be added?
Yes.
Yeah, so like, yeah, new receipt, line item came in or something, you would just, you just add it to their, their-
That's through the clerks.
Through the clerk.
Because I guess there again, we don't, the Treasurer's Office don't create the things, it's, we receive them.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't-
To be in charge of it, yeah.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking so much about the Treasurer's Office, I was talking more directly to Linda, help.
You may have passed that over to her.
Pass that over to her, okay, okay. And then what I add at the bottom is nothing fancy, but there's always gonna be something that's a little different. So, it would be really helpful, I'd think, to everybody involved in reconciling, just write, okay, this happened only once a year, or this happens, you know, down here at the bottom, you just make a note to them, and they, they know that, oh, okay, we don't have to look at this except for, you know, once or twice a year. So, things like that, I think, once we get everybody hopefully on the same page.
And I like details, especially when we do receipts, right? As much room as the system allows me to put, I usually use it.
So, you were saying something about miscellaneous shouldn't even be used.
I, I just don't like it, I mean, uh, I went to Pratt County back under Spark, and they had one point five million in their miscellaneous in the general fund. And we were six hundred thousand last twenty-two, so I just think it, it's, I don't mean this bad, but it, it's just, some of it, you know, is never, they haven't been trained, you know, how to do it.
We're just gonna-
Some people, I will just be honest with you, some people just get lazy, and that's, I mean, I'm just being very honest with you, some people say, oh, we don't need to do that, I can figure that out down there. I mean, that happens, and what, uh, Marion County Treasurer told me is, I think I sent that PDF with you, they have, once you get the line items cleaned up, they actually had, she had them all in there, and she actually went in and trained every one of their receipt staff. These are the line, only line items that can be used, don't use any other ones, this is what we use, so there's a training on the backside when you're receeding it, to make sure, that's what this whole verification thing was, uh, on both sides, to make sure it's in the right place.
Well, and I think that's what you talked about with me a while back, about, you need this procedural manual, because as people come and go, you, if you just, if you have all the instructions written out, then if someone new comes on, this is how we do this, and then they get trained on that, not-
Missed out grants.
Those are special instructions?
Very good.
So, the next step is, you're gonna talk about that in your training? You're gonna talk about that?
Yeah, I was gonna actually give them a copy of this and say, this isn't the final one, this is just something like what we'll have, but this is very, very important that you fill these out and reconcile them to the receipts you deposit with the treasurer every time you make a deposit.
And like I mentioned prior, we, uh, in the end, the goal is, is to individualize for each department-
That's right.
So that they don't have to fill something out every time, they can just check by that, um, fund and the cash and-
Yeah, all their fund numbers and stuff will end up being pre-printed.
That's right.
We're not gonna write the fund and account number.
Now, like the description, like he mentioned, the one time a year or something, then put that in, and that way we can receive it in that way as well. Uh, that's not just to help us when we're doing it, but that helps him and future staff, employees in the offices.
And should this stuff, should depositing and receeding be brought in daily? Twice a week, once a week, I mean-
Daily is not-
We say daily, uh, weekly is, it's probably no longer than weekly, but we have some monthly.
These monthly are-
Yeah, and that's a pain in the-
How current do you want your budget to look when you pull a report?
Daily.
Do you want it to be up to date, do you want it to be weekly or monthly, so?
They need to be daily.
They need to be daily.
And then she can't get her daily done, she can't get her B, they can't- Because we can't balance and stuff without them, and then we have people, we have so many phone calls, well, my checks out there, why don't you have my check? Why haven't you deposited, and we're getting all these phone calls, and it's like, I didn't even know that was paid, didn't know that check was out there, sorry, we're, you know, we'll look into it.
So, can you include that in the training, that deposits are gonna be daily?
Yeah, I've, I've told them that for-
That's a matter of- Twenty years.
And then, and then the other, the other side of that is if they don't deposit like daily, the money, if it's cash, sits around in a drawer, that's what happens a lot. And that can be misappropriated, so as an auditor, you don't want that happening, but we've, we've mentioned that.
Well, and when you stop putting everything into miscellaneous receipts in the general, people are gonna start seeing their budgets hit. They're gonna look at that and go, oh, I don't have any money on my budget, maybe I'll get caught up, it's gonna, part of this is gonna heal itself.
Right.
When we're doing it the proper way.
It, it's just taking time, because we're doing years of, of work and cleaning up and trying to figure out, and we're in current time, so we have current daily issues going on as well, so thank God for Linda, because it's inhumanly possible to do-
It's a project. It's a project that needs a person focusing on.
It takes time.
Linda, do you have anything else?
I'll try to send that and then you do use whatever you want. I'll try to send that over lunch hour. And use, because I think it'd be nice, whatever you end up developing, that that email, electronic document goes, I assume everybody has Excel and the department heads. Yeah, so they send that to it and they, they specialize it to their office and, and then what we might do is, once you all looked at it, you could run, I'll mine, you could run, run them by us. And just see if that's what it looks like, you know, looking at the audit report, looking at our trial balance, looking at what we do every year when we do the audit on budget. Uh, we could say, well, maybe this is missing or this, you know, this could be added or whatever, we could help, maybe just have a nurse that eyes look at it. And then just, it's just a matter of doing it, just having the department heads doing it.
What about expenses?
The what?
What about expenses?
To see the money going out.
Expenses going out are, are more ran through the, through the clerk's office and those, uh, they should be a, they should be in the right, they should be in the right expenditure lineup. Whether it's personnel services, contract service, commodities.
So those three are the only expense lines that you really?
That's the main ones. They, they took the capital outland and moved it out of the departments and we have a capital improvement fund. Uh, there are some other like roads, some of the road expenditures, some of those that are different.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that department is different, but, but the main departments, especially in the general fund, are all pretty well the same lineups. So when they pull up a, when they pull up a budget to actual, once we get it cleaned up, they should be able to look at, and I don't know how good the back years would be because they, some of them wouldn't be matched up. But at least look at the current year and say, okay, I'm in, I'm in almost April first and I have used fifty percent of my budget. You see what I'm saying? I mean, at least they would be able to, uh, say, well, what's wrong here? It's either an error or they've just overspent to this point. Or it's a department, you would know this at some point, like Roden Bridge, they don't really start spending a big money until what, May, June, July, kind of in that, when you start your road project. So it's all just a matter of, you know, getting it set up and then training them. I mean, they know about the Roden Bridge because Christine's been there for quite a while, but, uh, but, yeah, start simple and get it done.
I will say, in the past, we've talked about this and I would love to see us do more detail on the expenditure side also, which I think in the long run would help the departments on their budgeting. If you have office supplies or leases or you have contract, I mean, if you detail what you're paying out, then, which I think Burlingdon does that, you guys have line items for each department. Then on a budgetary aspect, you can really see on year to year, if you've kind of spent about the same or a little increase, or if you have a huge jump in something, you go, what's going on here? Um, I just think it's a way to budget better and also look for costs.
And, and most of the general ledgers are set up where there's more, there's more of those line items. This was an example, I just put it in again this year, but they have all their detail up here. And then we have it set up on this budget sheet where, when they fill it out, it actually codes it down here to salaries, contract service, that for the budget purpose. So you have the, the general ledger at the top and then when you do these boxes here, they code to contract service, commodities, or personnel services on this Excel spreadsheet for budget purposes. Because they can, you're right, they should have more detail so they know exactly, you know, uh, what they're spending on. Like in this case, this was, this was another county, but, uh, it'd be like vehicle or like gas and oil, uh, you know, just the different, different types of expenditures in there.
Well, and I think that also comes if they're doing the read only and they look at their expenses also, if they see a discrepancy, if it's more itemized, it's easier to catch.
The more detail you have, it's, it's going to help them with deciding, like you said, on the budgets and stuff.
And we'll talk, that's one of the sheets I have in the training this afternoon, we'll talk about that again, trying to, when they're cleaning up here, try to get those line items in the general ledger to match your operations.
Not as bad, but some of them are really like. But for K-MAG reporting, I'm wondering if we set up K-MAG, if people do that, what that stretches to.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it would, but, but this, this is more for preliminary, like you wouldn't, you might not have the, this would be for budget year. So like, getting ready to do the twenty, twenty-five budget, we set this up last year for the counties, uh, where we just said, here's your general ledger line items for each department. And here's how they match to the budget that's sent in the state of Kansas. So that they would be able to look at history, in this case, now yours may not, the history may not be as clean, but they can look at history here of five years. And then see what the current twenty twenty-five budget's going to look like and have it divided down here for us just to drop into the, the budget. We can play with thi- this part, I mean, and again, some of those back years, like twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty may not be, yeah.
Linda, what do you mean by the K-MAG, um, what you just referenced, what does that mean?
So, so what they have in CIC, and the only county I know that does it right now is Butler. And he, I mean, he's been there for, Ryan's been there for.
He gives, he gives those budgets.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I've been to his budget, um, that's not seminar, but training.
Yeah, so what K, what CIC did is back in early two thousands, uh, I, we actually used to contract with them to help them with all of that stuff like that way back. And so they set up a module and so what you do is you go in and you put a K-MAG code in front of, I think that's how it works still, I don't, it may change now. But it used to be you put a K-MAG code in front of every line item and what that means, it will track it and report it just as if you were filing your audit report. And it, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of setup, uh, but once you have all of this cleaned up and everything, it's a matter, literally, just putting a code, just putting a code in front of it and making sure all the codes are right.
And you'd be happy.
Yeah, oh, I, yeah, that would be really nice, yeah.
We'd all be happy.
Because then you could, then you could pull a K-MAG audit report, financial statement, uh, at any time if it's, if it's set up right. And you would be able to, like, if you looked at, uh, Appraiser's Cost Fund or one of those, you would have actual, uh, Schedule Two of that fund, just like it is at the department if it's set up right. And Ryan's, Ryan was within two hundred bucks on Butler County out of eighty, I don't know, I mean, million, it's a bunch of millions. Uh, so, you know, it, it's just a matter of getting set up and let the computer do the work for you.
He's very conscious.
He's, he's overly, I know, I should say that, not overly conscious.
On some of those that need to be corrected, do they have to be corrected before the line item can be ended?
You just can't have zero.
Yeah, you can't have zero. Okay, so those corrections will have to be made before we can hit the line item?
Yeah.
In case it's gotten you the wrong line item.
Well, there's still a lot of envelopes that haven't been done yet, so.
Well, this would be past stuff. I mean, like if someone's scrolling down, but like, yeah, it would be.
Sorry, twenty-three is not.
So any of this stuff implemented moving forward, would it be for twenty-four or twenty-five?
Twenty.
Twenty-four.
So if we got things put in on the receipting side, it could be implemented now? And then if we did the expenditure side, would you also implement it in twenty-four?
Oh, we're going to have those.
Well, yes.
They can all be, it's just what they're talking about, the line.
So when we roll, it's gone.
And you're already working on some of this stuff, yeah.
I just know sometimes you guys talk about how there's previous years and current year and.
It's pretty early, we have a process to live here before you have, so the sooner we get that stuff situated.
And do we know when that's all going to finally be posted?
We're working on it, um, we're.
I just check in every week and.
Refunds, like as far as our refunds, we're up to date on refunds, so, uh, the checks are being mailed out the next day, which is first time in years. Uh, we found checks in previous distributions, later distributions, months, they are actually up to date.
There are available refunds to the.
Yes, yes, so that's a great accomplishment, accomplishment getting that done. Um, and as, uh, far as the dailies were pretty much caught up, uh, other than the receipting portion, which this, with the line, the fund items, the numbers. Is what's kind of held us up on that because we don't know exactly where to put them. Uh, and we can't keep putting it into miscellaneous receipts or just general because that's, you know, we need some detail.
Well, that will make my day and stuff.
When you say caught up, like what do you mean?
Um, Colleen's ended in that portion, she's been having for this distribution, she's been having to jump back and forth and stuff due to illnesses. We have different dates put in before, um, current dates put in before past dates, but they were all done to the point to where we can do the distribution. Now it's just the receipting, making sure that these are.
Because I have like sixteen days out of the whole year, so that's why I think.
And she probably has a, she has a bunch more to bring over. So numbers, I don't know, like I said.
Every day.
We are getting up to date on that to where those can be sent over every day. We were working on distributions, the taxing units had to be put in for some reason. It doesn't appear like when, uh, we were being able transactions were done previously, that they were making sure that taxing units were being put in. And, um, that way, it, it takes a lot of time for some reason, and I had a clerk that was going in, putting in the taxing units and then we, she would look at them later and they would be dropped out. So she would have to go back and re-enter all of those again. Um, if we can get them to hold and stay in there so we don't repeatedly have to do that. Um, and also fixing the, the trailers, the RVs that were tidying correctly. Uh, next year's renewals will, I can show the staff a new way of, uh, doing the renewals to where it'll go really quick and.
Back to the, yes, as far as.
Should be seen.
If you have a little bunch that can come over, bring them over now, don't bring me five and ten, maybe that time.
Right, she's got, that might as well be finished up and then she'll be bringing those over, so.
Okay, well, let's move on to stay on track of what we're talking about here, so we've got Scott has an hour of our time to finish meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's no problem.
Okay, uh, the one thing I want to bring in with our, uh, disagreement, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the letter connection with examination engagement of those states counties compliance. And this is to you guys, our signature. Heather has some questions, so I just am going to give it to you, let you answer some questions. Thank you, Heather.
Yes. Is it a supplement to something or is it something?
Oh, yeah, this is the, this is the, where your, your, uh, ARPA funds were the majority of your federal funds. And so it's not called a single audit, it's called this, uh, where it says your requirements of an alternative compliance examination. And it's half the price because we just do, oh, we have, they have certain steps you're supposed to go through. And all you're saying here is that you've got all your ARPA funds and these, these guidelines down here below were, were met.
That's what makes me nervous on the backside.
Well, that's going to be the true, that's going to be true whether it's ARPA funds or audit or.
Well, in the past, I did sign the document, I mean, I signed it with a no, which is probably what I'll do today, it's just the same that we're affirming to you.
Yeah.
That we know that there's no errors and, and all that and I, I, we just, with these whole discussions, we know that we can't confidently say that, we're working on it.
Yeah.
I can confidently say that it's to the best of my knowledge. And that's what you're saying.
I totally understand what you're saying, but we as auditors have to cover our tail too because you are, as management, the ones that make sure that that happens, so, yeah. Yeah.
We're cleaning up the big mess.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Risks that we have to take out there.
Absolutely.
So with that being said, I will move to approve signing of the, uh, special engagement letter. The Ghost State County Illinois group stated that we do it to the best of our ability. Second. Motion's been made in second in all the favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's more like what's called a, what's called a management representation letter on the audit side. This is just specifically for ARPA.
Here, I'll take it.
You're going to sign it?
I'm going to sign it, I'm going to put no, just like I did before. I don't know why it bothers you guys so much for me to do that.
Because it makes no sense.
You don't have to.
It doesn't bother me.
It don't bother me, it, I just.
Well, you tried to take it and bypass me, so.
If I wanted to take it and bypass it, I would have.
He's done.
We've had a rough day today, I think we should take a breather and stop and eat some lunch or something, correct our relationship. It's tough today, very strained. Okay, moving forward, that's done.
Okay, so what am I do with that? Is I've made some notes here and I'll do that first when we meet with the, with the staff. Just things and you can, you can jump, anybody can jump in and I'm just going to say Michelle's meeting with it and I got in a box here, take it serious. You know, that we get these, get these cleaned up. And then I'll, over the lunch hour, I'll send the Excel spreadsheet to you and the treasurer's office. And it, you don't have to use this, this is just, this is just a rough draft, I just.
Are you wanting us to attend the training or is this for the department?
It's up to you.
Okay.
Uh, I, I wanted to cover two things out of the training I put in here, I kind of, last night was texting you, but, um, and I think we've got about fifteen, twenty minutes here and then more, then you guys can do, do what you want. Well, is the training in here or, or you, is your meeting done after lunch?
Uh, I was just going to recess, if anybody wanted to attend, that would be multiple treasures wanted to attend.
Yep, okay, let me just do this then, since you may not attend, I'm just going to show you what I'm going to cover, I'm not going to go into the detail, I'm going to show you what I'm going to cover, okay? So on the front page, I just put that in there for a laugh because they'll go, I'm glad the auditor got hurt.
You have our budget calendar.
Yeah, so this was a budget calendar that Heather and the team, your different department heads mainly, uh, I think, well, all of them, I think, I think, did all of them get this? Just, there were about five or six on there that got it probably. And the dates have all been filled in and you see who, by, by which office or which, the board of commissioners or the auditor. I'm going to cover that, um, just going to talk about the big picture of who's watching over the county assets because this literally is one step of that, looking over the county assets and making sure that you have it in the right place and the right fund and all that. Uh, how to build a long-term budget, we're just going to talk about that. This is, this is the page, I wasn't sure if you wanted to add anything else, uh, Heather and I have talked a little bit, but what we were thinking here, the big picture was, you know, you're wanting to remain revenue neutral. I think that's what you kind of looked at anyway, uh, or talked about. Uh, where do you, where do you go, uh, how far above three to six months of, of money available can you go before you start backing off property tax, okay? And that's a question that I've got an answer down back here in the back, I want to show you what I, I found this morning, uh, and then we can, we can, that's up for discussion. How to help departments look for efficiencies and I think that's just efficiencies in anything, you know, uh, you know, how can they, if they can get this, even like this, if they can get parts of their office set up where it's, it's organized, it's already filled out. All they got to do is put in the dollar amount that they receive and there's just things like that that they need, need to take care of. A report to compare previous year, um, request by department and so what we have on that, I put it in here.
Did you send that, I brought them a copy.
Yeah, I, I got it in here, uh, give me a minute, well, I said I did, yeah. On page five A and five B in the handout, this is an Excel spreadsheet and this is the, the guy, she, she reached out to Axon County and we actually do their ARPA funds there and so he's really good. And, uh, so what the top one there is on five A is this is actual department, uh, and what they requested and what was actually spent in twenty-three, what the budget request was for twenty-four. And how much difference there is, and this would be twenty-four is here, and this would be done. So I put the one that was completed, that big arrow down at the bottom there, what that's saying is that the twenty-four budget was three hundred eighty-two thousand more in total than the twenty-three budget. The twenty-four budget was three hundred eighty-three, two thousand, so what this, I think he even, did he even publish this?
So he sent.
That one thing you sent me.
Well, he hasn't, so this is the twenty-four, but he has a twenty-five.
Yeah, and then the twenty-fives on the Excel.
So he takes the twenty-five budget like that and as he works on it, he has it posted to their website where people can.
Oh, posted website, I didn't know it was.
And so, you know, different departments submit things and so it's a working document and people can get online and see where they're at along the budget process. I wanted you to see the finished one.
Yeah.
Because what I liked about it was it divides all of the items, um, it says organization lines, it divides those items and it has the percentages of change up or down. And then it divides the appropriations out and then it divides out the budgeted non-love-y funds. And so you can see every line and if those departments, what they're requesting is up or down and it gives you reasons why. But then you can add the line items and see what the true budget that you're approving, what those dollars are compared to your yield.
Supposed to be something that, I, I think it'd be pretty handy, uh, just as we go through the budget meetings, uh, you know, with the departments, we drop these in here and we see how they track. You know, as we, as we move forward and then, I don't know about the website thing, but.
Well, you, that was the document that you, I think you saw.
Yeah.
He just lists, he clicked it on the website.
So these sheets were actually, I just some county numbers we're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. He just, he just sent it to us exactly how he did. And I, I mean, it does seem pretty helpful in tracking them, uh, percentage wise, because like here, like if you look over, I thought this was kind of interesting. County general, most of. And I, I mean, it does seem pretty helpful in tracking them, uh, percentage wise, cause like, here, like, if you look over, I thought this was kinda interesting, county general, most of the, most of the funds on the twenty-four budget will be five A, if you look at the change in percentage, look at county general, it went up two hundred and forty-seven thousand percent, I mean, two hundred and forty-seven percent. Now, some of that could be, they wanna put more in the general fund, so it's more flexible, and they can move it around between departments, or that may just be what was going on.
Yeah, it says for Cape Can, increase for Cape Can returns.
Health benefits, yeah.
I think they moved their health benefits to that line.
Into the general fund, yeah.
Turn fifty percent, that's a pretty good increase.
A pretty good increase, yeah, yeah, big number. Okay, so that, that, I was gonna go through that and just show them how, uh, department heads, how we were doing that, I gotta keep moving here, cause it's about lunch. Okay, so then I was going to, if you go back to, to A, these are, these are ones Heather's put in, but if you have anything else that you wanna add to this list to help me, uh, or just help us, as we talk about the budget going forward, you can just list them, or email me, or, or whatever. Uh, but I just put it on a sheet, and what I was, eventually, it'd kinda be nice to do, is, um, be able to put a one to five, what, what's most important, what's least important, you know, and try to narrow it down to the, the key items. With that, let's just jump, cause that, this ties into this, this is what I found this morning, if you look on page seven, well, seven A, let's start with seven A, and then I'll show you what I added from this morning. Seven A, we've never done this here, but this next document I added in here is, okay, we have a capital improvement fund, but we haven't, I don't know if we really have an idea of what that next five years would look like, or seven years, okay? And so what this is, this is a city, but it works the same way as a county. If you look on the left-hand side here, I did this last summer with them, and that's where I live, Galva, but there's a new maintenance guy, and he's really good, and the city clerks have been there twenty-eight years, so we sat down for almost, almost three hours, and went through the entire city, uh, down the left-hand side of what needs to be improved. And one of the biggest problems they have is water, which is gonna be a big thing with cities all across the state of Kansas. But these other things, I'll just give you an example, uh, new electric poles, line thirty-one, you see that? Sixty thousand a year for the next five years, okay? What the problem is, and I, I'll tell you experience, uh, board of public utilities does their poles, and I was sitting in my building, and I looked over and go, what are all those board of public utility trucks doing there now? And we'd already done the sheet, there's, there's one hundred poles, and each one of them is about somewhere between four and five thousand, you know, to put in, and get it buried and all that. I go over there and go, what, what are you guys doing in my yard? And they go, well, uh, yours is one of the poles, they took their shovel, and they put it through the bottom, there was no, there was no pole in there. I mean, this was a big pole, it was all gone, and if that pole would've went over, I'd have been mowing the yard, that would be quite a, but the whole line would've went over, but that, but that's just example, and you don't think about those things like that, how, so to answer the question, that's the reason I'm showing you this, to answer the question is, three to six months enough? How do I know, without this put in place, to know what you're gonna do for the next roughly, I mean, it's, it's a guess, somewhat, but the next five to seven years, how are you gonna use your resources, what are you gonna use for, you know, to do that? And this, this right here was incredible, and I just, it's a little town, county would take a little bit, little bit longer, but to put something on paper like this, because the next page, this comes from what's called the Government Finance Officers of America, and this is a county in, in, um, this is a county in, uh, North Carolina. So they, they use this as a framework, and I went through, and you can, I'm not gonna go through it and read everything here, but I made notes on here, and what it is, is like a, establishes you in a long-term vision, what, you know, what's, what's the, your vision as commissioners, uh, for the long term, and, and they, it goes through and does awesome. These checkpoints on page seventy, has a governing body, now that I've circled them all, has a, your governing body set goals and priorities to define the community's needs, are your goals and priorities used to determine the capital investments? And we would just go through, and use this as a kind of a framework, and put one of those worksheets together. And I think it was over here on page, um, seven G, I really liked this paragraph, on the left-hand, there's two columns at the bottom, on the left-hand side, and it said, um, accordingly, each year, Wake County reviews the last six years of their seven-year capital improvement plan to update schedules, cost estimates, and any other important characteristic of the project that have cha, may have changed. Departments can submit any new capital requests that are not in the plan, departments are also invited, and I like this, uh, instead of a wish list, departments are also invited to identify Wake County what they call horizon issues. So the horizon issue never gets on the capital improvement plan spreadsheet, but you as a commissioner know that this is something that's probably gonna change in the next seven years, not because, we just don't know when, you see what I'm saying? But you can read through this, this is really a good, uh, document, the only difference with this county, it's, I mean, it's a lot bigger than yours, but, uh, they also operate part of the school district, so their expenditure side would be a lot different yours, but this is the plan they've put in place, and GFOA is like the, the five-star rating, uh, finance, uh, officials across the United States. And then it goes in and, and just, uh, says clear rules, like on page seven I, uh, this, I never had read this before, on number three on seven I, there's six steps, number three says strive for a debt-to-pay-as-you-go ratio of eighty-twenty. The objective is to ensure that the county doesn't overutilize their current resources to pay for capital projects that will have a long, useful life. And what that means is, they talk about it here, and they go in detail here, but they talk about, okay, what are you paying for today that might be another generation really's expenditure? But you're having to have the vision today to be able to put that in place, to be able to do that, so should that be more debt-related, or should it use current resources? It's really good, I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read any more of it here, but I really, I just found this this morning, and it was, it was their, it was example, as people are doing budgets, these are things that they might, you know, consider as a commissioner, and someone that plans. Uh, the rest of these things are things I covered, I've covered with you guys, like cash, I like on page four B, I go through and show them how, you know, what their monthly, what your monthly expenditures are for the year of twenty-two, now it's one year behind, but it's, it's probably pretty close. I go through and, I wanna show them, cause we talked about this receipt, I wanna show them on page six A, you know, miscellaneous receipts of six hundred and ten thousand, that's why we're doing this receipt sheet, because we're not gonna have six hundred and ten thousand in line, and it's, it's ridiculous, we don't know what that is exactly in detail, cause everything just kinda gets thrown in there. And they were telling me up there that, like, when receipts would come in for a day, instead of wanting to insert them out, they would literally, in the past, uh, year or two, they would actually just go in and throw it into one pile, one deposit, have no detail, and that's why it probably got stuck in, in miscellaneous. Uh, I'm gonna show them the general fund and how it works, and then, um, let me see here, there's one other thing I wanna show you here, I think it's up, I think it's up here on the budget authority. Well, maybe it's bad. Maybe I left it there, well, that's interesting. Anyway, I was gonna go through and, and show them how budget authority works, and like, if you're, you know, even though you're the general fund, and you don't have specifically, you have a budget, but you think, oh, I can just spend what I want, because the general fund is not limited by the budget authority, except for the total, uh, that's not, that's not good, because what happens is that somebody else has to give up their, their budget authority. So we as department heads, need to make sure we're staying within the budget. I don't know, that, it, it'll probably be, last year we went two, two and a half hours, they have questions, and, which is good, I love to have questions, I mean, that's how we learn. And I was just gonna talk to them on the big picture that way today, and then I'll talk to them about the receipts, and, um, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna talk about.
And then, we also get this, this is the revised one, you've got the last three or four years.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have this, and.
Oh, for the training?
No, not for training, but for us.
Yeah.
As we, as things get plugged in.
Yeah.
To where we have the.
It's all set up.
Yeah, this is a four-year, are we doing four years each time?
I think that's all.
That's sufficient, yeah.
Yeah, they just dropped the numbers in there.
Okay, with that being said, thank you, and we're up to, what's our E P bill, so what?
Yep.
Questions you have, and this.
Yeah, I'm working through it.
And then one o'clock, is that when we're?
One o'clock is when you're gonna be with the department, cause that's the one we discussed earlier, that the commissioner had no reason to be here, you're gonna talk to the department heads.
And, and maybe it might be able to speak more freely if, if.
I think we could, uh, you're probably just gonna, if you're not paying attention, since I was just gonna have confidence, and I, then we'll just go ahead and close the meeting, and then Heather, you do whatever you see fit.
Yeah.
Well, I may, I may come, just.
It's fine.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't care, either way, you're welcome.
I think as long as we don't have discussion, we can be in the meeting, right?
That's, that's a, the point, the point is, is be able to have the department heads be able to speak freely, and visit with our auditor, and engage without demand over the top of them, so to speak.
Yeah, whatever you, whatever you decide, I'm probably gonna, um, set my laptop up, do a couple emails, and then maybe go grab a sandwich, and then I'll, I'll be back and ready to go at one. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get your room fixed.
Ah, man.
We got the.
That's the magnetic.
You got all your stuff done, did you have anything for us?
Huh?
Do you have anything for us?
Oh, no, uh, other than the litigation update, we did an executive session.
I'm not used to looking over, seeing anybody on that side, I mean, this is our day.
Can you, can you look at this one?
I have it, yeah.
Well, I just, I was thinking that we, we have three, and each are getting that amount, I don't think that's. I could've, but I think it was less than that, so I don't know if this is supposed to be split between the three spares, cause it's listed as the.
Yeah, I think he's got that, she's down there. Four thousand.
Well, yeah, it's not, except, I think.
Check one four thousand dollars to one.
But she made out of one.
But we.
It is a square thousand, very well.
I think in the budget is like seven or eight thousand, and so, I don't know if each entity gets the same amount or not.
No.
So I'm wondering if, if it was over one, if that's the amount.
I'm curious, dude.
It should be on our sheet here today.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah. They just used the sheet from last year. I believe.
Also, would we decide, obviously, we've talked about this, this a few times.
Yeah, I hadn't got any real information yet, that we forgot, I was gonna ask to share, I get to begin today, but I just forgot, and I don't know what the policy.
Well, I'm not sure if we have an official one or not, but like, with the diversion.
Okay, the fair was seventy-five hundred was the budget.
Right.
So I think it was three, three, and fifteen.
Okay, cause the, this has over, we're getting four, so it seemed a little bit disproportionate, and I didn't even know.
Yeah, I don't know how that would happen.
Can you tell that?
Unless it was from a previous year too. Was that twenty-four, twenty-three, Heather?
Well, I'm trying to find it.
So it says proposed budget for twenty-four, so it's current year, and then the prior year it had eight thousand, but then it went to seventy-five, and I know it was, Melvin got fifteen, because they had their sunflower days, and then the other two split the other.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
What's the invoice number, or check number?
Look at six, uh, six one one seven one.
Six one 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 seven?
Six one one seven one.
I think that ambulance.
Except that's for the sheriff's software.
Yeah.
Which one was it? Six one one seven one. Is that a check number?
Yes.
Seven one.
Six one one seven one. What was the whole, was it budget, whatever he was looking at, was it the year?
There are law.
What, what, what were being out?
Three, three, and fifteen.
Oh, is that what it says?
There you are.
Oh, that's just expenses, so what's this saying? So, are they overpaid by eight thousand, what'd you say they were broken down as?
It doesn't show a breakdown, it just shows, uh, seventy-five hundred, so we'd have to find, uh, uh, Osage, and we'd have to find. But I believe that is wrong. I think it's supposed to be three, three, and fifteen.
I'm wondering if they submitted this amount, not knowing that we had changed it.
That's what I'm thinking they did. Well, that's what it's been for the last three years.
Yeah.
Take that one off and tell them to verify, uh, I mean, that's what we need to do. Can I have that, one, we just did that?
Yeah.
Are you ready to say this?
Well, I was wondering if it's appropriate, I know you had a long morning, we only have thirty seconds, so there's one.
I'll give you a full minute if you come up here.
Full minute, wow, thank you.
You take all the time you need, we're just glad to see you back.
Thank you, and I'm so grateful for you guys and all of your support, um, been working through some health issues, so, um, I just wanted to, I'm sure you folks all are aware, I've received several phone calls over the course of the last few days, that we, Osage County, we've lost a friend, and a good partner in the area, in Tim Carty.
In front of the, uh, Maricopa.
Yeah, and our heartfelt condolences go out to his family, his wife, three boys, and a daughter, four grandchildren, and, um, of course, people have called me concerned, and, and wanting to know more about the details. Uh, his services are on Wednesday this week, and his obituary is, is out there, um, but I also wanted to reassure everyone that our partnership with EMP Shield on many different projects, and many different levels, are proceeding. Um, unfortunately, Tim has had a long history of coronary issues, and so, of course, the company had contingency plans in place, and there's a board operating the company, so, I'm so sorry to talk about these things, but these are some of the questions that have come to me. And so I just wanted to, just assure everyone that things are moving forward, we are moving forward. The other question that has come to me is, as everyone knows, on behalf of Osage County, we've entered a partnership with Coffee County to do a water feasibility study for the entire region, and that is. and that is still under review, we have not, uh, they have not announced the awards yet, but as far as we know, um, the process itself was going forward and was going smoothly. So any, we're expecting an announcement any day now, so. But I also wanted to share on behalf of the commission, I was planning on sending our condolences, uh, to Tim's family and attending the services on Wednesday. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, so I know a lot of people are, are concerned, and he's a, he's a great loss to our region, so. I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of their partnership. Tim personally supported with letters of support some of the grants that we've been pursuing, um, so he got it. I wanted to just share that with you, so my heart's in a totally different place, not numbers today.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, and then the only other thing is, uh, I don't know if you folks had received, uh, the letter from Katie Hodge, the city manager at Osage City, where she was saying, apparently about a year ago, we lost X-ray services at Osage City.
Landowners.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the numbers are not trending well. Year over year, we're about ten percent less breast exams than we've had in past years, and they're really concerned about that trend. We know early detection, uh, can mean, you know, much easier treatment and longer life. And so she was reaching out, um, she's gonna actually be reaching out to multiple municipalities to see if they would put together a letter of support to try to appeal to the CEO of Stormont to see if maybe we can reinstate their services down here in Osage County.
They're restructuring a lot of things.
Yes.
Because I go to the Carbondale office, and there's been so many changes there. You can't call and schedule appointments there, the front office staff really, they check you in, but, I mean, everything gets routed to Topeka. They have condensed so many things, they have cut services in small areas, and then pushing it all to volume in Topeka.
Yeah.
So I would love if we could get that back, but just seeing the things of the last couple of years and what they're doing, and it's not patient-friendly.
Yeah, centralization.
It's centralization and volume-driven, like, you're a number, you're named a number.
Yeah.
And it's sad.
Yeah.
So I would love if we could work on something to try to get those services back in Carbondale and Osage City, because it's important.
I, I believe so.
For people here not to have to drive thirty-some miles.
Right.
For a basic X-ray.
Right, right. Well, shall I try to work with Josh to craft a letter, uh, maybe for signature?
Oh, yeah, with her, see something.
Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll go to work on that this week, so. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome back.
Yeah, thank you so much. I know I owe you some things, so, I got that on my list.
You don't owe me anything.
Thank you.
I do have some pictures for you, actually, and there's a bunch of them posted on Facebook.
I put one, I.
What'd your team do?
Oh, you did, yeah.
What? What'd your team do in the disco?
They did awesome.
Yeah. Early game disc golf course, brand new.
You a nickel, man?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I say you brought in ringers, then, if you want.
Yeah. You get, is that the one that you had?
Yes, but I would say that I would still like to get these when they're ready. Um, I know you told Michelle not to send them to me anymore, but I would like to think that you're not telling another person what I can and can't get.
I want to be clear on something. It's a very large effort, and we're trying to accommodate, and we're trying to get everything sent out to the commissioners ahead of time so we can make our meetings efficient. And then when we get into the meeting and you're not ready, that is frustrating. That makes you wanna throw everything up in the air and say absolutely not. And I know you're doing some political fanfare here, and for some reason today it's been a lot more than it has in the past. Uh, but I would never tell the commission what they can and can't have. But when we go out of our way and we're trying to make this better for everybody, and then we show up to a meeting and, and no one's reviewed, it's not ready, and I've gone through it, it, it was even in the email, if you had questions, review that, and you could call back in and ask those questions there. None of us think that we shouldn't be going through the money. We're trying to find the most efficient way to get through these meetings and get, uh, and look over this money. So some of the things you've said today kind of rubbed me wrong, I'm gonna just kind of bypass all that stuff, and absolutely, uh, we'll keep sending them out, and I would appreciate that at this next meeting. You've had an opportunity to review these, contact them and ask the questions. When we get to the meetings, if you absolutely have questions for us that you feel you need our input, that's great. But be prepared, that's all I ask.
Which is fine, sometimes when the emails are sent out, I may not get them right at that time, or I may not be able to stop what I'm doing to then do that to get back with her.
I'm as busy as anyone in this county, and I made time to go through that, so. I'm just saying, uh, with that being said, uh, I did note the bill that you, uh, picked out here, and we're gonna go ahead and just, I will move to approve the bills in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and forty-nine cents, less the four thousand dollar bill, bringing the total down to three oh two.
Right here, again, two.
Three seventy, forty-nine, until confirmation of that check can be, uh, achieved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. There you are. And then I'll provide this with that sheet, that's the final question. Um, and after Commerce, Doc and Scott, I don't feel that we need to, then just put that with that register, because that's the final question, so if you can review that. Uh, I don't feel that we need to keep the meeting going, so I believe that is our last.
I will move.
I will.
I will move.
Okay, class, hold on a second.
Hold on.
Why is this a question?
Huh?
Why is this my question?
Because we believe that the budget only allows for three thousand dollars, I believe, for that particular entity, and the check is for four.
And those were previous year's amounts, and we're wondering if they submitted an invoice to us for that amount.
They just submitted the invoice because they just thought they were automatically gonna get paid.
Well, they may not know that it was.
So this really should've been a encumbered amount.
It should be, because.
But we weren't able, we just got it.
It's already in the budgets, and that's why I went and looked back at the budget sheet. There's seventy-five hundred of us, look up what Osage City Fair got, and it's the same amount. I think it's three and three and fifteen hundred to sunflower days in Melvin.
I don't know, I'm trying to take my head, yeah.
I think that's, and it's been that way for a few years.
So you just want me to check the amount that they can have?
Yes, yes, and that's kind of where it's in the motion. That way, you confirm that the amount is three thousand dollars, and it can be adjusted to three thousand dollars.
Okay.
I will move, I adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, y'all have a glorious meeting.